It's lockable. Were you in the military Keith? Were you in the military? I don't think so either. I was and I, I lived under the ocean on a submarine for months at a time. To have aspects like you say that I can't come into a public building and start speaking, you gotta be kidding me. You gotta be kidding me.
Good, how are you?
Tired much?
Todd, he saw we had the sheriff on the interview today.
I did. Okay, I'm sure it was.
It's gonna deal with, I think, uh, police.
The additions. So do you guys have the police arrest yet? Is that what you think they're having? Do you have the police arresting for speaking, for, uh, for, uh, for the name of the car? So when you tell me that I can't speak, then I don't, don't you have the authority to speak to, to say that I can't speak in here since there's a, uh, on the commissioner, you have to decide if you can speak in a public building before a name is started? Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? What, what authority do you have to do that for? Public authority to do that for?
He's up.
Constitutional law. You control the, uh, meaning, um, uh, starts at county, but also prior to that as well.
What people use, uh, what? Oh. Oh. So you, you give them that?
You can't speak on a quest because I don't like you. I don't like you speaking, so you don't have the right to speak in public before a meeting starts directly. Um, is somebody else talking Keith? Is somebody else talking Keith? Someone need to stop talking, bud? If you're gonna apply that rule, you gotta apply equally, right Keith? I guess back when I was asking about discrimination, you can say that I can't stand over there, it sounds like discrimination.
It bothers me.
I still hear people speaking Keith, do you please, uh, tell them that I'm locked speaking, it's public, please, even in their presence? Can you please tell them?
Alright, we'll get it answered, right? Alright, thank you. Lock two.
Lock two.
And this, I think, is Mr. Keith, can you actually talk? It's interesting, I want you to have this on your roll. So much so that they think that, uh, by speaking here, it's not up in their works that I'm gonna start to do.
That clock's off. A couple minutes.
Let's get it to nine o'clock, it's quicker than. I think the sheriff has the ability to start from the beginning, or start from the end, whatever you wanna do. Completely not answering a simple question about locals who have citizens can't stand somewhere in the media. Especially when all you chariots up there every time are like, oh, we can't hear you, can you come forward, we can't, we got hearing aids. Meanwhile, we try to do the same thing and it's like, oh, we're gonna trespass you. So, we can't hear you, kind of thing, so, you know. Uh, I've been over backwards for you guys to hear about, uh, that same courtesy just you, uh, not extended, but also arrested for trespassing. Isn't that something? Isn't that something? Matter of fact. Trespass from the entire premises, not just the courthouse, the actual playground as well. And so, speaking of retaliation. Todd, you know what retaliation is? That's sort of constitutional law one oh one? Did you say that it is or it is not retaliation?
Page fifty-nine, we're in a meeting with pledge leaders. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking at what, uh, with, uh, resolution here, uh, with the dog hanging down. Starts to look over. Yeah, I'm sorry, I meant to color copy this, but I didn't feel that, so. But I think it shows up as being straight out in your sections. I just wanna breathe, um, kind of ten thousand foot view about what's changed. I, um, I probably didn't highlight, you know, the distances, I mean, I kinda went down all those distances. Kind of to be, to, whatever, change those, it should be all changed. I have to double check, because those are the, what's meaningful. Um, number two is the concerns section, we talked about. Where we talk about what the desire is of this, uh, about what we're trying to accomplish. I think I actually did still highlight, still highlighted the businesses on the country. Um, starting on eleven, page eleven. You'll have, this is probably the biggest edition. Talk about, you know, permitting terms and requirements, so this is doing that by, essentially, it's, it's got screening, landscaping, views, and we're now kind of affecting maybe the leasing. Erosion belts or shelters or whatever that are already there, they can incorporate into, uh, the plan. So hopefully.
Roads.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah. So hopefully we won't have to, you know, have people tearing up like it's there already. A good, good idea to have those in, push it right about to something like that. And just firms there, that's, you can tell about those. And fencing if they want, and that's probably a question there because there's the fencing around the system itself, well, security fence, it's set in a different section, this would be something more.
No.
I don't know, it's, of course, reading, but we go on, you know, uh, uh, secure, hopefully with a bar fire. Chain link does not get, you know, for a facility if they wanted to build an equipment fence or something like that.
I think chain link, we discussed that, and chain link would be okay, but no slating, the plastic slating in there.
We did talk about that.
Oh wait, this, then, then that last.
Yeah, that's the last sentence, yep.
Should go.
No, fencing shall not include chain link fencing with slats. Chain link is okay, but you know those plastic privacy slats that they put, that they weave through there?
Okay, so.
Yeah, so cha- once they chain link would be fine.
I'm just trying to, see, did I, yeah, I read that just past, so, uh, so I'm putting chain link, but it's, I mean, you're saying slats.
Yeah, like I said, those, like they put up around your yards.
Yeah.
Your yards.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because then it's security very rapidly.
It could be more natural, it's pretty, pretty relative.
Yeah.
Well, that's something to look at here, kind of what you want, because I'm assuming this is in the area between facility, you know, broadly, and the road, you know, dangerous and stuff like that, so. I don't wanna, you know, if you guys don't wanna, I don't wanna have another, just fence out there that doesn't do a whole lot. When we emphasize, so, think about ways that that would change, because I don't know that that's very clear if you're, you guys would incur, you know, trees and such, uh, fencing. Page twenty-four. Starts some revisions about enforcement.
Sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It says about enforcement.
Page twenty-four.
Yep. So, I figured, you know, we talked about the different times that you guys could enforce. I mean, to my mind, before the permits approved, it's kind of, you don't really have to say anything because permits denied if they don't comply, right? So we're not worried technically about kind of enforcing that, because, so, to my mind, the other two would be during construction and then post-construction. So, you know, so we catch things, our inspector catches things during the construction process, what do we do? After the fact, if something occurs, what do we do, enforce it, and that was. That first one, section five, part one, sub A, that's the construction phase inspection. Yeah, I've added a whole paragraph there. So basically, it's, it's stopping them if there is, this was already in their statement, which was, if you got a sense that there is, they're damaging the environment or doing something out of, out of lack or they just aren't following any of the terms of permit that they have. So that, if it looks like they're locally not complying, then we have, you know, stop. And we also need, so you, you guys have power, just you, but I didn't put it in the plan to issue.
Right.
So, that, I mean, that, to me, seems, that makes sense, because it's kind of a, it's gonna be kind of big deal.
Yeah, it would not move back to that.
And so they have, you guys halted, and you, and they have to remediate. If they don't, then you guys determine upon notice and hearing that they aren't gonna comply, or they haven't complied, or however it works, and we're going to halt. And, and the main thing there is, is that we're thinking upon granting permit, it, it's not a vested right until they actually start construction. So if they're in the construction phase, they have a vested right to use, especially. So, you know, they, they're entitled to due process at that point, which is why you guys have to have hearing. Which, there isn't any particular, you know, this is not a courtroom hearing, it's not a, you know, bells and whistles and sworn statements and stuff like that, it's basically an administrative hearing where, presumably you would have the inspector come up with whatever he's got and present it, and then you, they'd have an opportunity to respond, and you could use that, anything like that, in regards to, you know, if they, if they really are complying, or if there's just some disentend or corrections made, that could be worked out, but for some reason, they're just not gonna follow what you're supposed to, and at that point, you guys can think.
Who'd you guys think that it would probably be, wherever the inspector is, wherever you're here, probably we can report this to, with during, oh, yeah, roots. During the construction group? That necessarily would not be in the regulation, that's just the agreement of the wire.
Yeah, yeah. And then, again, number two, that's, that's what I'm covering, post-construction. And I think the, the first sentence there is, you guys just made a point to have a meet and confer thing before it steps up. I mean, if the inspector goes out there and they say, here's what's wrong, uh, here's the plan says, whatever, and they say, well, blah blah. You know, and maybe they work it out so we don't have to take the level, but then again, if it's, if they can't agree on the nature of the violation, the need for correction, or the method of compliance, or the commission itself, you know, this all the hearing first, determining compliance. And if you issue a order from said hearing, you know, not applied with, and the time set by the commissioner, especially there was, especially these. Then engage any bonds or undertakings to destroy the property, you can make a settlement. It's, it's same kind of deal, but it's just, it's just not, you know, it's, it's specific, you still got that with notice hearing.
Due process. With. And I think those are the day. The day, so.
Um, I, let's get, I, I strongly encourage bonds being taken out of there and escrow to be put in. I don't like bonds, I want the money put in escrow. I think it's a better way for us to go on that.
Just talk about letter of credit too, it's still an option. Letter of credit, everything, as opposed to, uh, escrow deposit.
We can talk about that.
We didn't talk about that, yep.
Very good.
Great, you?
Doing great.
Alright.
What's up?
Uh, I think you, uh, get the approval passed in two minutes on the, uh, land of the first side, just where you did on the, uh, bridge for two forty-six.
Yeah.
So, Ivan James, nine, nine hundred and eighty dollars. Eight hundred ninety-eight dollars. Uh, Phil Shute was nine forty plus fifteen, that's two sixty. So you have the Ireland's for five hundred thirteen. They were seeing a motion for approval, so I did all that in two minutes.
Make a motion to approve the seller's second, second, can you approve the second?
No, I, I, that was Ivan James. Twenty ninety-eight. Um, I was at landfill the other day, and they brought sir, eventually Mark, asked him a few questions, and he was really confused. Here, here's our, here's our five-year plan, he said you'd ask about.
Yeah, I bet that's five-year plan, we've got five-year plans in the landfill.
Well, that's five-year plan for all my departments, so they copy that. Um, he was concerned that, well, if I don't get back to Mark, including this in the range in Indiana, he was not, had help at here.
Thank you.
Or, or could there, also, he mentioned something about the, you'd ask questions about the building down there. It does not pay for, we do not pay for it until it's completed, so that, there's that. Uh, we did get the artwork and stock done down there last week, so they're good to come in and start, uh.
And are we gonna put it where the, where the, uh, loader sits right now?
No, no.
How about?
It's, because the, the landfill's getting filled in, as they come down the hill, and eventually, we will be moving the entrance and the pit and everything down the hill.
In the building, I mean, the actual shaft and the layout for the, uh.
Transfer station will sit there.
Yeah.
Yes, but the building for the loader will be slightly down the hill, did you see?
On the opposite, it'll be on the opposite side of the.
Left side driveway.
Yes, and that way, he, he's coming out there, go straight across into the pit.
Yeah, well, either the way it is now, he can go out, turn, and go straight down, and then come straight back up, and right into where the sits right now.
Well, he can do the same there, he doesn't have to come up across the driveway, he can go down to the east of the transfer station, around, and then straight across and still.
Okay.
So he'll be able to, he won't have to go across the drive.
The road and everything like that, okay.
And in future, like I said, will be, as it gets filled in, we're moving down to the south, you know, so.
Yep.
That just works into our plan later, down the, down the.
Okay.
Uh, occurred to me about a call last week about, uh, getting us to come out and finish up the marketing line up there, I don't, I don't know when we can get it, but, uh, ready to get something scheduled in here in the next two or three weeks, uh, to get back on. Not real sure, Matt's gonna go out, take a look at it, and get back with me on it. So, we'll make some calls there, and split off, or, uh, what we talked about is, at the end of the day, that we can make it to get a loan, maybe just driving to take it there, instead of making another whole trip, that's kind of what we're hoping we can do. Again, you can't get our, it's all through, we won't be worried, so, it's, it's.
They still out.
Yes, I guess that they did move in last week and were starting to tear the dirt off the top, but that's all they have done so far.
So, no, talk a lot of winters, start fresh again, or?
Oh, probably gonna be, I mean, I guess.
I would guess so too, yes, at least.
Alright.
I wish they could crash more in time, you know.
Yep.
Uh, I got a flim nerd quote, uh, on the GPS system, uh, kind of interesting phases. Uh, first phase, the assessment, pressurators up in the GPS, uh, not been informed, uh, that could be parlayed later next year. Uh, we'll be able to work out, but they are eleven thousand nine hundred seventeen, nine, uh, that'd be on a three-year contract, or, uh, thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thirty-four thousand dollars for everything.
For this first phase.
Yeah.
GPS on the cameras, not anything to do with the form.
No cameras in the cab though, right?
And trucks.
Yep.
Yes.
Forward-facing camera.
Forward-facing camera, and trucks on it.
How close are we to the forms? I mean, that was the biggest push on this.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, you, we'll be into next series to get this form, those stuff. The forms have kind of worked out, but getting their system to talk to the STAR program, uh, there's still in talks with G D, uh, about that.
Well, I mean, like, like I said, I thought that that was the main push on this, to save money for that, was with on the forms.
It is, it is.
So.
It's time to.
Oh, no, I understand that, I really don't wanna spend the money on it until we get everything all lined out. And it's, uh, because there's no guarantee that it's gonna talk, correct?
Correct.
So I just think get everything worked out, because if, if it's not gonna do it, then you don't see the point of spending money for it.
That was my whole point of giving this upfront here, is, you know, we're gonna talk, because we didn't know if we're gonna talk ten thousand or a hundred thousand.
Right, right.
We have kind of a base number now.
Yep.
So, proceed with it or not proceed with it.
I, like I said, the, the whole point behind this was to try to get money savings in the, uh, in the office area.
Correct.
With the forms.
Correct.
And if we don't even know whether it'll talk, I wanna, I wanna guarantee it's gonna talk before I wanna spend the money on it. So, I'd say, when they, when they come back to say, hey, we got it worked, that's my opinion anymore.
I thought that was just a flimary.
Sure.
Quote.
Sure.
We did get the, uh, federal exchange money back, uh, eighty-three thousand nine hundred four, eighty-five. Uh, I'd like to put that back in where Rockford. I said it's federal exchange money, I said I'd like to put that back into the Rockford, again.
Last year, the change.
This is a little bit, then, uh, did I talk anything about this, keep it sealed, you ever find anything out now? I'd like to come back there and see if, if I got to say anything.
Yeah.
You don't find anything.
I don't know, hand that party snake, because our current, our community position from on top. Uh, we have definite IT issues going on, uh, supposedly, we're gonna have to come in the morning. Uh, there's three options they, that they could use, so, I don't know. Uh, but anyway, last week, we walked off the K ninety-four hundred and ten, two eight six, new highway to P five, two thirty-eight, B V E, with three service, brakes and tires on, uh, the trailer also on O five thirty-nine truck. On O five thirty-eight, we had electrical problems, and we rebuilt cylinder and rewired the low buoy trailer. Water truck would not build air, so, uh, he's working on that today. Two tubes replacements, three, two for shanks. Then this week, back to K road, got hauls, some to nine four hundred and ten, two eight six, P five to O. We are gonna do two seventy-eights, new highway to old highway, uh, zero surfaces, and then the water truck leaking water. And, uh, they'll fuel commission on O five seventeen, that one that we have rebuilt, and then they think the rear end is out of O five eighteen and blocking up, that was the other one we had rebuilt, so, we got some issues there. Uh, one tube replacement, two for shanks, we're ditching and cleaning up the dirt as we go on three ten hard S and working on the minimal maintenance, and as I said, we had an issue with the parts, IT, and that's.
I did shoot you an email before we left, just to see if you had come through, if you did anything. Just a test.
Well, we can email.
You can't even email.
My, I'm really shy. We tried to, I tried to email it to. Uh, Jennifer, I tried to email it, so.
See, mine, mine has been working, and, uh, 'cause I had emails this morning, I sent you an email, so she tried to send me emails, so I could print this out for, to me and Jennifer, and this is where I called you. That's kind of weird, in my mind, working.
Since it's, since it's been so dry and we're not able to really go out and breathe, we're on roads, you're working on minimal maintenance troops?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's all we're really doing, because it is a total waste of time.
Yep.
To bring to the, because it creates such dust, and, and the men, some, you know, and then you're, I'd say it's a total safety issue, because when you meet someone, you then, on that road, even without.
Well, last, last night, I got yelled at when we grained a road, and then they got yelled at because we didn't grade road, so.
I understand.
At the end, we know, but.
So.
What a problem.
Yeah.
In fact, uh, IT, like I said, they are, you have kind of tech problems with IT.
I did have it, yeah, we've been talking to the, uh, last week, uh, Tim, I've got the, uh, the, the ticket for this, and you have ID, I've been talking to her all week. While I was having a ticket, so she gave him the ticket, and he wasn't even aware of it.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that he necessarily would have to be aware, um, because the goal is to not go through him every time we have a it's to have a direct contact. Now, she wants to C C him, that's great, but the goal is to have you guys or Christie or any department yet be able to have a direct contact. Contact with I T mountain, so if we add a third.
These are the ones that I asked you to assist the order person take it after my one, so you just take it.
Just to log it, that's fine, but getting involved in it is.
And what did Jennifer say that they had?
And that's that's what we're trying to do.
They're they're all supposed to be out there.
And they hope that it will.
Well, exactly.
Go better for her and I'm trying to email to you tomorrow.
They they can't print or can't scan.
What about North East Sweden? Is it doing okay?
Another one.
Okay, just down, just ruin the bridge, okay?
And then when we complain about STARS not working, that was. It was a point of all that working. So.
Yeah.
I mean, so. Did you guys shut off all your computers and everything?
Oh, yeah.
Yes. So anyway, um.
Whatever.
Okay.
They asked me to come over here to help or go over there to help, same thing.
Usually around the bottom of the tree. All right, please.
I said it's gonna pressure things to end this with. Uh, when do you plan on winterizing the power washer?
We. Two bar.
Yeah.
Yeah, two bar, two bar. Talk about that. Uh, right now, as long as we have good weather, we're gonna pump it out. Okay, we are part of the building and so. And it's all all the stuff for the weed department's been winterized already.
The only thing we've really have winterized is we have the water tanks, of course, both of them still running, plus the two water. Now, dust control tanks, that's a, that's a thing, it's all completely, we did all that this summer.
Did you get a call uh on the reporting, a lady calling and thanking you for fixing her road, I think it's in the south, north northwest part of the town. She just stopped here on the street and said, hey, thank you very much. I said, please call it in, pass it along, but.
Or not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, very pleased, so those are things, feedback, I think, you know, there are folks out there. We need to probably, I would say, win the executive session to matter personnel. See if I have. Um, go ahead and let's just talk about B S D. So that discussion. Yeah, and and I also could be sent to here for. She's got stuff to do or if you want to be involved in in like B S D and contract. Yeah, I just didn't want to hold you up.
So did you have anything else for me?
I.
Yep, nothing.
Yep.
Thank you.
So.
All right.
You have, is there any input that you have on running through or that contract? Other than we know they're gonna have some, they're gonna have. All right. Consider the gal's thing?
No.
That's going well?
Yes. So, all right.
See, thanks for. Okay, um.
The contract, the part, the way we're fucking with that is, uh, things come finding out. We have Ag Partner, which communicated very well with us about the tanks. Uh, they they were gonna think that we're gonna move all the tanks in for us. When they need a new, they'll come and bring the new and move them for us. Uh, for maintenance and keep all the uh. Wiring, all that stuff they had, more units that we need probably.
Okay, we're gonna comment on that. So the lease agreement says nine hundred five hundred gallon road greater tanks include operational equipment. It does specify hundred and ten, it's like twenty-four, so.
Okay.
Operational equipment for the ones that is a hundred and ten is gonna be twenty-four volt system that that they're gonna have to supply.
Right.
Well, he's he, I was trying to talk to him last week and he he says that he told him to talk to me, but I do not. That did not happen. Said he called and talked to me and I told him that everything was, electricity was there, did everything. We've never had a conversation in my personal.
Okay. Well, so if somebody say right here it says operational equipment, it does not say hundred and ten, it does not say twenty-four volt, so whatever you need twenty-four volt. You're gonna have to tell them either twenty-four volt or solar, because I think we asked them when they were sitting here that day. If we need solar, whatever, we can, it'll it'll be fine. And they said, yes, okay? As far as the uh repair and maintenance, under eighth responsibility for tanks, the duties of K P O to repair and maintain the tanks described in eleven below. Notwithstanding from time to time the lease until they return. And only it says there is during terms of lease hose nozzle and filter replacements will be at the expense of Jackson County.
Correct.
That's fine. Uh, Jackson County should pay all claims and damages arising from Jackson County's negligence, abuse or handling of the tanks and accessory. Well, negligence, abuse, yeah, great, we're responsible for that. But then it also says if tanks be able to operate properly or due to repair, Jackson County shall immediately cease use using the tanks and notify K P O. Unless otherwise set forth in this paragraph, all other repairs and maintenance of the tanks shall be at K P O's expense. So that kind of answers that right there. It's there. Right?
I agree with the maintenance.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about the movie?
The movie, it specifically says here in the in the contract.
Jackson County will move it.
Yep.
That's that's gotta work though. I mean, we have no, we we don't have tank, we don't have a way of taking fluid out.
Well, I don't, I I would think they would come pump the fluid out, pump the diesel out. I mean, that would be a.
We'd.
Kind of a no brainer on that.
Well, I'd let's.
Let's let's look at that.
Let's make sure.
Yep, let's make sure on that, but yeah, it specifically says in here that we are responsible. Uh, that with number one, we'll provide a lower grade to install ten thousand gallons.
Yeah.
And K P O will not be responsible for setting to remove the tanks for the less than ten thousand gallons. Right, first sentence right there, delivering installation of tanks. So.
Why don't we bring them in and talk to them? So I don't.
Well, I don't think they need.
I mean, I don't think they need them this week. I think it just needs to be worked out.
I think I think you just need to talk to them and say, okay, look, we understand that we have to move them, but now when we have to move one, greater moves to two miles down the road. You're gonna come pump the fuel out and we move, right? Is that is that the understanding?
Right.
I mean.
That's what it happened to.
Yeah.
So I think, I just think one day. Brett and Farley or Brett and just go over that with them, just go over everything in there and if there's a point of contention that you can't agree to. Then let's do some negotiation on that and.
Well, I think so far it's been, well, this is what the contract is, it's over there.
Right.
Yeah.
So again. I I think it's just a conversation you can see if they'll go have one of them.
Because we also have the situation where it it says operational equipment here. Uh, the two thousand gallon tanks, I thought at the time we were talking about all this, the two thousand and tens, they were gonna be uh card swipe. Well, it's just ten thousand gallons card swipe, the two thousands are gonna be back to paper writing, just like we've always have, so.
Those those need to be, those need to be part of the two.
Well, according to contract.
Yeah, make a point of that with Brett that that's what needs to be.
Yeah, so. And then if they're not and they need one of those pumps, need to have meters on them so we know how much fuel we're putting into machines so we can write it down. Uh, the pumps we looked at the other day on the five hundred gallons did not look like they had meters on them, so, but they don't need that.
I know, I think the preferred amount that would be, let's go with the the card lock, that way. It says, is that not in the contract or in the contract that they're card locking?
It's not in the contract of the two thousand gallon tanks, but I'm I'm just looking at the uh, I'm looking at the bid here and. We asked for two double wall, two thousand gallon tanks, avoid location, one at the shop. What is the cost of each tank? Will you supply and maintain the tanks? Uh, what amount would you need per tank? And please see to note below that they're not in charge, the minimum per tank, it's minimum per, you know, whatever.
Right.
Uh. So I'm curious.
Does the card lock say anything on the ten thousand?
On the call, on the ten thousand, yes, it says what is, we're asking for one, and they're again, we just asked for one double wall, ten thousand gallon tank at the shop. What is the cost of tank with monitor and pumps at both ends? Uh, and they give the price for sixty-five thousand, this also includes telemechanic fuel management system, blah, blah, blah. If not telemechanic, you can deduct twelve thousand from the tank. So.
Oh.
I I I just, I just say, we need them with the all the two thousand gallon tanks, what's gonna be, you know, either.
How that Tomac, sure, the Tomac, how that system works, you have to have dedicated phone lines to do that. Our ten thousand, we got a tank out here, when we put it in, uh, we have to run a separate conduit uh for the phone line or what they call it, half by line.
Yeah.
So they have to have a dedicated two lines running back to our phone system in the building, uh, so.
So down here.
We don't have, we don't have phone lines down there at all.
Down.
And then we would have to run one to the.
They.
For the other location.
I know they could put telemetry to, you're saying that the telemetry has to have.
Or the card lock, it has to be a phone lock. So that might be why they left it off there, because there is no phone line.
I would say, yeah, at this point, go ahead and just have a conversation.
Yeah, just have.
Go over these, go over these things with Brett and then, you know, come back and then get, you know, continue the conversation, but. I don't know if Brett would say, look, I. I'm sorry, did you say?
No, I'd like to just say, please just stop one.
Okay, um, I believe at this time is the entertainment motion for uh, it's a session for. Fifteen minutes.
So move, move presence.
Um, so I'll let you do it as you hear.
Okay, I move to go into executive session, person, personnel matters, non-elect personnel period of.
You said how long?
Fifteen, fifteen minutes, starting at nine thirty-eight. With a meeting to reopen, fifteen minutes later dislocation with uh legal counsel, uh Scott.
County charges four hundred dollars per month, which includes copies.
Per month or per year?
Per month, yeah, and Bergen County is fifteen hundred dollars a year and that includes their. So I'm, our county is an active. I'm also um going to add a new subscription, which is bimonthly, uh, for a hundred dollars a month plus copy fees. So I just.
Mostly realtors and title company, okay.
Yeah, individuals can if they want to.
For a two year old research and things like that, or?
Uh, if they want to, for any reason, they can, cover record, so.
Okay.
But um I would like Todd to go over the online access agreement. Uh, that agreement was made in two thousand and thirteen when we first started having online service and that was made by our, at that time, county counselor.
So you're gonna go from three and a quarter, you said?
Correct.
Okay. You need that now?
I mean, yeah, it's fine, just not too long.
When would you implement this?
First of the year.
First of the year, yeah, we're, uh, November first is when we usually mail out the uh online access agreements to our clients. We currently have sixteen and uh we will be billing them out that way and if they want to do it before the end of the year, they can, so we can get them set up for the new year.
Perfect. Great, that's really cool.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Tim's not gonna be in. So Tim's gonna be in at eleven. And again, it's just a discussion about um the current tower that we use for communications. Structurally, I believe, is what he would use, mobile handles, the new equipment. So there is a, a lease agreement that he can enter into with uh another tower holder. That's actually a little closer to Holden, which will be beneficial, but.
The body tower or?
No, this would be a communications tower.
Okay, purpose built.
Yeah, yeah, and there, I believe he'll, like I said, fully explain it, that's just kind of the gist of the thing. He he was frustrated because this engineering all came later and he thought they should have. Let him know that prior to all this happening, uh, so. Anyway, he wrote. Todd, what else you got, force? Where you want to start?
I don't know, I. Kate sent me something about.
In the letter.
Sanitary codes.
Yeah, all the.
Oh.
Mark.
Yeah, those are sanitary codes we talked about uh last week and I had brought up from. My board meeting with Northeast Kansas Environmental Services, uh. Jackson County. Right page here, uh, Jackson County wastewater applications, we are the highest of any of the one, two, three, four, five counties. We had forty-one and next closest one was sixteen. Uh, and the reason that we're so high is because our uh sanitary codes. Require a inspection upon resale or upon renters moving out and renters moving in. So we want that out of it. Uh, we don't think that that's very conducive to the citizens of Jackson County and we want, we want that removed. We don't think the inspections need to be on.
Mandatory from our side.
Mandatory from our end.
So basic.
If a special lender says you need a sanitary.
Inspection.
Inspection, boom, that's it.
They can still use, they they'll have to pay for it. They'll still have, they can use, they can utilize either Northeast Kansas Environmental or they can utilize their own individual that is licensed to do so.
The the county will not be requiring it anymore. We don't want that that burden from the tax period.
Only only for new construction.
Yeah.
Of a.
Yeah, of the system.
Yeah.
The system.
I mean, I'm presuming in the quarter, they've built a system, they've got a perk test and.
Uh, per, they, according to them, perk tests are not a thing anymore.
Oh, they are? That's septic only.
Yeah.
But I think that's still that would be, isn't it?
I don't know why.
Two septic system.
They said perk tests are not really a thing anymore.
Well, how do they determine whether it can be a lateral field?
Big question.
Is it based on? Well, that's.
I think soil sampling. Yeah.
So anyway, that's something that we'd like to take out of that, um.
Make sure our systems installed are equipped and inspections are checked from properties offered for resale. I think that's what, I mean, the. New systems are getting tested.
Right.
For being built. new systems are getting tested, right, for being built. I guess the idea seems to be, what they're saying here is, is that every existing system wouldn't have been, or at least, ones that were made created before the sanitary code, or any sanitary code, might not be compliant. The only way to test it is upon sale, which, this is kind of like, you know, non-performing use and zoning. You have, you know, residential property in commercial zone, and as long as it was there before the commercial, the zone commercial, you can keep residential use. And the question is whether, it stays that way if you, if it's destroyed or if you sell. And, you know, in this instance, I think what they're kind of saying is, why you do it this way is, is that every old pre-code system would then not be inspected. Have, unless the buyer...
Unless, unless the lender required, yeah.
By, by aware kind of situation, um, you know, I think that's, if you're guys' call, I don't think there's any...
So, County County does not require inspection upon sale of property. Only, they only require it on new construction. Or of the system, not new construction of a home.
And that's just about it.
So, yeah, let's, we'd like to take that out of there because, I mean, I mean, it costs more to have a lagoon inspected or a septic system inspected than it does to have it completely pumped out. So the guy pumping it makes way less than the individual who just comes out there and inspect it, uh, so.
Yeah, I'll just double check to make sure there's not a red, it's just gonna give them...
If they're, I'll use this expression, at the end of the day. You buy a system and it's not working, you're gonna get fixed, because you can't operate it without it, so ultimately, the, the end of the game plan is, you're gonna get it fixed. Yeah, and there are, there are certain loans, like FHA, they require, so, that's great on their part. But the other thing is, the other thing this does is it allows the lender or the purchaser to call John Septic Service, who is certified as an inspector. And when you add competition into that, the price typically is gonna go down, you know? And that's the goal, to me. Every time a renter moves out of a rental house in this county, we're gonna require that the septic be inspected. That could be twice in one year, or every year, or every three years.
Every month, in some cases, you know, I mean...
So, that's what we're trying to, to streamline.
Yeah, I get you. Okay, well, I'll double check to make sure we have across the state law lines. I got a couple of, a lot of correspondence recently. That's probably, uh, executive section, I don't know, if you wanna go ahead and follow up and do that right away?
Sure. We've got an article two comes in.
Yep. I mean, this is probably fifteen minutes, attorney client. Clerk, she was receiving some things.
Okay.
Intervene the motion to go into executive session with twenty-five privilege to include...
So...
Ten oh five?
Yes.
Uh, I move to go into executive session, purpose of attorney client privileges discussions for period of fifteen minutes, starting at ten oh five. With the meeting reopened, fifteen minutes later, to commission room, for the purposes of discussing continuing legal matters and claims involving the county. Uh, Christie calls, so.
Second, please, take it off, favor say aye?
Aye.
No. Christie, have you seen the new contract they're gonna propose for, uh, interest, this type of thing? Okay, I got the old one.
Anything else, Todd? I'm here, I still owe you guys, I didn't mean rules, so. Just knowing that, I got to do that. But that's it, I think.
Ellie, you were at the, uh, meeting, okay, good, if I remember correctly, so many meetings this past week. Kansas Department of Commerce Economic Development was in town on the seventeenth, specifically the Kansas Office of Rural Prosperity. And they're encouraging, obviously, and trying to work with population counties of under five thousand dollars for economic growth and improve with grassroots strategy. And it was, the general consensus is that we're not gonna bring in a manufacturer or industry that's gonna hire a thousand people because of our infrastructure. This is very similar to the one that, our request of the milk processing company here, oh, I think, three years ago, that, uh, we got the notice on Thursday, and they wanted everything phased, uh, to them on a Tuesday, so we had to scramble around. Obviously, electricity's not available, land wasn't available for what they wanted, and water. So, do you remember that? Um, there is an office that they recommend we work with, um, and infant stages and everything, but, uh, there are programs that we will be looking into, as well as the rural opportunities, so they do recommend that we continue to work with that and to try to help with businesses hiring students back here and helping with, uh, student loans. So, but the county itself has not put money into it, like some counties, but, um, we certainly encourage that as well. And then, anything else, Mark, you were...
I don't believe so. Uh, we do have another, uh, speaker coming on. Let me look at it real quick. Along the same lines, uh, I don't even remember. It's in November, yes.
I didn't have it. Got a lot of exciting news, trying to upload them. The ideal type of situation for us in our small communities, the lieutenant governor, whose department of commerce head, was in circleville, they, they kind of spread them around. And he starts small and then build on that. Businesses in the community that come in, there's a construction company came into the community and hired three or four people, then all of a sudden he has another crew. We have several of those, which we call champions, that are hiring local folks, and then they're building the structure and everything. So that's most likely the best avenue, um, and also, it's talking about the fact that corridor out here, the highway is a very good transportation asset we have in Jackson County, and if we could get some spinoffs from some of the bigger cities, we would be in good shape as well, so.
Sure. I did have an inquiry from somebody here some minute ago. Um, what's the status, I mean, you know, you discussed with Holton Hospital, I guess, the sales tax concept, is that moving in your direction or something?
I, no, we have the hospital, they can read us.
Right.
We did have discussions on it.
Correct, we did, we had a discussion with them about, um, a percentage of some sort. Don't know what that looks like, don't know what their thoughts are, um, they're more welcome to come back to us, uh, have that conversation, if they want us to pursue it. We can explain to them what they would pursue, and we would be the ones who would, would apply for it, if they're on our behalf.
And that was, I mean, it's an election issue, it's our call, so, I mean, it's not gonna be this election.
Well, it wouldn't, there's no way it could be, because it would take, they'll come back in session until the end of it, so therefore, um, it's gotta be sponsored, introduced.
We'll get legislation, that's the plan.
Correct.
First, first rally was, I was, I was wondering where everybody was pointing, the question wasn't whether the hospital was taxing it, and I think the answer is, it isn't.
It is not.
But, the, you know, kind of allowance we talked about, only potentially changes, and that's something that everybody could, you know, if they have an issue with the rest of the election, if, if the bill would ever be established or made out of committee or even presented, so.
Yeah, I believe, uh, Francis Arakam said that, you know, we could, we could apply, there, we could apply for the, what he said, the quarter, half, whatever it is. And then we can give that to them. But, I'm not sure that they have the ability, I, I, I don't know if you do it on their own, I don't know.
Yeah, I think...
I think it would have to come through us sponsoring it.
Correct.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, essentially, your guys' sales tax would disclose to me going to the hospital.
Yes.
Um, in, or, just to close the loop on this, I don't think, if anybody on the county's end is in the process of going to legislators or anything, that's, like, hospitals are gonna have to be there.
Yeah, they would need to have, come back here and have a conversation with us, and request that we would pursue it on their behalf.
And, what's the feeling gonna be, that if they want a bill sponsored, probably you'll have our board?
Yeah.
It's not, you're not gonna be whipping votes or...
But at the end of the day, it still, it still goes before the people of the county who...
Yeah, it, yeah.
Registered to vote.
Yeah.
I mean, Texas, I don't think they give you a vote on it.
That's just the legislation that allows the vote to happen.
Correct.
So.
Yep. Yeah, I found that email, it's, uh, Mr. Pritchard, Nathan Pritchard, and he will be in town here November fifteenth through the eighteenth, and available on the eighteenth for meetings, so, uh, that's what we're looking for next, get some information with him. Uh, very meeting on last week, whatever date that was, Thursday, Thursday, alright, thank you. Uh, I did bring up to the, to the state that one of the things that, that kind of hampers us here as far as for grants, and looking at things, is the fact that, uh, when, when we have someone come in, like the milk plant, the one, come in right now, we don't have any kind of a database to say, well, Holton can offer this many kilowatts of electricity and this many gallons of water, and we have this much housing, we have these many empty lots, so on and so forth. And I think that that is one of the things that has hampered us for economic development here in the county, is that there is no database for that. And, the league's like, I, I guess I've never really thought about that, but it is something that you, that you need to have, you know, I mean, bigger cities and bigger counties can do this, and are probably already have it, bigger cities where the smaller counties and cities do not. So she was gonna look into that and see if that's something that they can incorporate on the state level to, to put that in some kind of a database, so, you know, maybe we're looking forward on that a little bit, I...
Well, and, uh, one of the things that comes up in my, my work is that people don't generally, uh, talk the water, the water, the county's easy. Some rural districts, mostly, some cities go outside. And, so that's, you know, it seems like it's an afterthought almost, so.
Yeah.
So, that's the idea, it would be a good idea to get out in front of that on these types of things, because frankly, talking about the Department of Commerce, they haven't been, to say this personal experience, they haven't been thinking about that themselves. Of course, I mean, I think, I hate to say they're, you know, a number of the golden shovel prospects rather than what the mechanics there are, but you have to know before you get too excited about where the water's coming from. Some of these uses are being pretty intensive, so. Yeah, you know, a plant, a fuel plant in Southeast Windus that was under construction, they didn't have no water, so they had to spend millions of dollars to... Yeah, I might've, I might've known, I might know about that.
We presented a, what, a lot of questions that they had, to go back and research.
Yeah.
Which is good, I mean, that way we're trying to forward things.
Yeah, I understand, and part of the problem is database wise, it may not be, I think it's, it almost would be in certain areas, you'd have to contact the, the district directly, it's not like it's a, we can, we can do this. Because everything about that is where the property's located.
Yes.
And, and it could be on the edge, and on the computer, and a lot of them just can't tell you.
Yeah.
I mean, they got water modeling software, but the, you know, you first have to have an engineer for some of these, especially the larger.
Well, it, one, sure, ideally, like, and I'll say about this too, Holton has a three mile radius that they sell electricity to. If you're beyond that three mile radius, and whenever you say you go to Dennis...
Evergreen Brown?
Yes, yeah, and you brought that up too, with the, uh, the multiple co-ops around here, that are always the energies that, uh, depending geographically, where do they wanna put something? They wanna put something in Soldier, for example, uh, you know, I think energy or whatever, but that's a lot. That should be on company, but, I mean, for us to know would be...
Yeah, but I mean, it's, you know, if you, if you have somebody coming looking, uh, you know, for some old manufacturing, woodworking shop, whatever, they need repays for their equipment, so on and so forth. Is it available there?
Yeah.
You know, how many kilowatts can they operate on, uh, and, you know, uh, they're gonna operate a paint booth, so they have to have, uh, X amount of gallons of water for their paint booth, for, you know, uh, their filtering system, so on and so forth. So that's, like I say, that, to me, that's critical, to be able to know those numbers. So you can even begin conversations with people. If you don't know those numbers, you're just kind of, oh, yeah, I guess you can try it and see what happens, but, you know, that's...
Yeah, and, so that was presented to us with, uh, at City one time, the phases out here at the industrial park, I don't think they could have the three, but they had the two, so who's that on? I mean, you know, manufacturer paid for it, and I don't know how that played into it, that this company decided not to.
Holton has its own electric utility?
Yes. Well, not many small towns do.
Oh, I have one, but, yeah.
A submarine, submarine engines run the plant down there. So, let's, I'd like to go back to any, uh, to the, the draft here, uh, in these drafts.
Yeah, the forward concerns resulting in, in developing standards, so.
Does anybody want a copy of, uh?
I would love one.
Hot two? Two, three, everybody?
I got one paper, is that too much?
No.
No, no. Well, the one, the copies that I made are two sided because they're cheap.
Oh, okay.
But the one Christie made was one sided because.
Guess my turn now.
Yeah.
So, so one of these concerns, one of the things in here that was brought up, at, at least one thing that I know of, was decommissioning, so I'd like that added in, uh, how, and I know we addressed decommissioning, but that was public concern.
Okay, so we got a spot, and then we'll see if we have to.
Just under.
There's a plan, there's a plan.
There is, but I wanted to address, so when somebody pulls this out and they go, okay, here's a list of, of things, decommissioning, right out of the gate, they'll know, okay, they're addressing decommissioning within this document.
Yeah, well, this is, I'm on page twenty one.
I'm on page one.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Uh, under number two versus board of concern resulting in standard. And we have A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and H, and I. Those are just kind of that beginning of the document.
Oh, you wanna?
Yeah.
Like a safe decommissioning term?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct. Anything else, uh, that, that you guys can think of that needs to be added into that?
I think we covered them all pretty much, and, yeah, decommissioning does need to be added in there. Uh, we've got infrastructure, water, sanitation, impact.
And I haven't read through it all of them yet, but does the other?
Well, I just got it.
I'm a speed reader, yes.
Yeah, I got it.
Um, where does the, uh, you know, decommissioning, more like? Basis.
I mean, it's just, is it good to talk about page twenty one now, or?
Yeah, so.
That's the, that's where the detail is gonna get.
Okay. Is the pilot or, uh, drones?
Yeah, and that's, it may, well, we may be, no, not that, so. I mean, I'm, this is, the concept of eleven is that when you apply to the permit, you're already, you have a plan in there, in the permit, that says how, what you're gonna do. So, I mean, the idea being is that that's, you know, before the property is disturbed in, in a major way, that's the best time to figure out what your conditions are, you know, where, what grade soils, cover, whatever, so that you can figure out, I mean, goes back in thirty years, you know, how they're supposed to do it. And, so that's, that's why this, this is first, you know, when they do that permit, this is gonna be about how they're gonna do it. So, and that's just the introduction, it says why, decommissioning of solar panels must occur that you need to increase electricity, and the operator doesn't immediately restore the system to operating condition after notice by the county, so it can't have a ban. That's basically the ban in the condition. Decommissioning shall also occur before the final closing of the facility, but before the end of the term of the special use program. Decommissioning can also be ordered by the court of county commissioner in a finding breach and regulations violation. And then A is basically removing everything. And that's maybe a technical question here, that says that cables that are deeper than thirty six inches below cross depth may remain upon following requirements, that's basically an abandonment in place. Map is given to one call and noted in the record, so, I mean, I don't know about you, you guys, but that's not necessarily something that's frowned upon in the parole context, because lines that are below flyodep like that generally aren't really a problem, and especially if you abandon in place.
The water lines and such.
Yeah.
Typically abandoned.
And so, but if you hit them, it doesn't matter, it's not gonna be a leak, and all you've done is, hopefully you haven't damaged any of your equipment, but.
Yeah, again, we don't know what the landowner lease also has in for decommissioning either, so.
Yeah.
They could go a lot, they could go a lot further than what we're requiring.
Yeah, and these, I'm assuming would be minimum standards, and that the property owner could negotiate for better terms.
I got a question on, on this real quick, like, before we go on. Up here, what you read up there about operators not immediately restore system to operating condition after notice by the county, uh, it should be that notice to the county? And if it is notice to the county, where in here is there a timeline that says, uh, we have ten panels that are not operating and we'll be replacing them now? Starting from this date to this date, we will be replacing, whatever. Do we have a timeline in there on that, do we have any, anything like that in there? Cause I think that needs to be in there.
Well, I guess.
Well, because we're saying, you know, that, we're saying right here, operators not immediately restore system to operating condition after notice by the county, and I think that should be notice to the county.
Well, I mean, I think what I'm anticipating is the ban, that we're not talking about, like, one section of the system. I'm talking about the whole system for whatever reason that comes in the end of thirty years, that somebody decides it'd be better to shut, switch off and then run away, so. So it would be the whole thing, and then we would say, oh, by the way, if you shut, I mean, this isn't producing electricity anymore, if we get a problem, where are you at? And then they, they come back and say, oh, we're, you know, we're having a temporary ban, whatever, or no response, then you guys can say, okay, we haven't had a response, and we should, we, we go, we engage all of this stuff. Because you're, you're, if you, like, were noticed from them, it may not come. You're saying, we haven't heard from you, this is your last chance to help us. And we can put timelines on that, that seem beside the point, because I think we dictate timelines at that point. I mean, you could say, if it's not in there, you could say, respond to us within ten days, by the end of ten, or we're gonna do whatever. And they, they pretty much got it.
The technical term here, what Mark was saying, basically, to the county is from them, by the county is from us to them, so.
Yeah, and I think it needs.
They go to first, then we do the by, correct?
Well, I wanna do, I wanna do by, only.
Okay.
Because I don't want them to be in control in some way of notifying us. Before we. We can, right now is where he's, we can give them notice, I mean, we basically decide when we give notice. If the entire facility is not, not operating. Yeah, and I mean, it, it really is, anytime that they have a, if we come to them and say, hey, you know, it's a problem, and it really isn't, they shut down, it isn't them trying to ban it, they should come back right back and say, oh, you know, here's a problem. And, I'm not kinda, I just don't wanna give them that, you know, I mean, give them the power to kind of dictate when we can give them notice.
Good.
Still going on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Uh, B.
What page?
Twenty one. Okay, I did the paragraph, A looked like a paragraph, B. Decommissioning plans, the site will be reclaimed, your useful life has been disminuted without delay, regrading to the approximate original contour based upon prior topography, for the minimum ground disturbance, restoration of the topsoil areas required such seeding of the land after removal, equipment and revegetation of reclaimed soil areas across several places. That's the, that's coal mining, language, or service mining. And C is the soil testing after removal, because that's one of your concerns, is that we're, we're not putting dangerous or sub, substandard topsoils on top of, you know, where it used to be prime farming.
Another one of the topics at the front of this page, which would be, sort of, we have today now?
Yep.
So the next one would be, um, that I remember people asking was the question of where will, where will the panels go, and how will they be recycled? Is that something that we need to address in here, or is that something that, I just know that that was a question?
Yeah, and I don't, I don't recall any, like, direct.
I mean, that's kind of like asking a tire, Wilson Tire Company, what do you do with all your old tires?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see, I.
Do you think that's important to put in as a concern?
Yeah, I, I don't know, cause you guys have been out there, what's there? I mean, it's a useful life thirty years, I mean, we're talking about replacing.
That's what we've been told.
Yeah, but just the ones that are faulty or.
Yeah. Whether they're recycled, whether they're.
Well, I'm sure they're being recycled for the silver and the silicon and everything else, so.
Well, that's, that's another thing, I'm glad you guys brought that up.
Well, let's, look.
Wait, if this goes along with silver?
Okay, okay.
Because, uh, people are asking me all the time, identify the chemicals used in the project, and what happens with a project if a disaster happens, especially with midlife? Is it shatterproof, is it gonna be strung out all over, you know, mid-America, you know, if there's a tornado or if there is hail? I would like to see that identified, what it is, and, you know, silver, I've seen silver, I've seen aluminum in the project. I don't know, I'm still, I think that needs to be identified.
Well, I, I think part of that is I don't, I don't know the answer to the mechanic question.
Right, right, Todd's an expert on, on that.
No, but we need to ask, but, or the, or the engineers that are involved with this, so we can know specifically. I get asked all the time, hey, what if there's hailstorm, is, is that going to be little pieces of glass?
Did you think it would be beneficial to request from a representative from the manufacturer?
If they, if they're willing, I think that's the best way, because I really.
Yeah, we're asking you questions that are above your fabric.
Well.
Well, I mean, I don't think it'd be, if they're willing.
Yeah, well, I, I was trying to think about, yeah, I could, I could contact about that, but, but, I mean, you're right, the idea is, is that there's a public concern about the fact that these are either faulty bunch or they're damaged in the storm or something, and they have, for whatever reason, have to be removed, what's the, what's the environmental impact, and how are they disposed?
Part of the, I, I, I mean, I'd like to see it be a neutral party, um, meaning someone from, uh, maybe Kent State, like, the engineering department, or, you know, somebody that doesn't have a dog to fight, that we could, uh, that would give, you know. So maybe it's, maybe it's reaching out to Kent State, to their engineering department, see if there's some, uh, uh, or an independent, uh, you know, Sunfire Electric out in western Kansas, that already has, they can leave one, maybe two solar facilities up in operation, ask a representative from there to give them a speak, if they have some. I just want somebody neutral that's not gonna go, oh, it's all.
Any of them.
Or, oh, it's all great, so.
Who came in and spoke to us, uh? Who's the solar installer around here?
Oh, uh, that's, uh.
Yeah.
Devator?
No.
Was he installing?
No, not working, uh. There you go, Mr. Wheeler.
Oh, yeah, Wheeler, yeah. Yeah, I, the part about that is, he's, he's in the business of selling solar panels. So what, which way is he gonna be? I, I want somebody, you know, from a research facility that is reputable, that can speak to both sides, and separate the wheat from the chaff, and, and really understand, you know, what are the faults, what are the concerns?
Well, I was, I was thinking him more along the lines for, uh, what they're made out of. You know, what the components are.
Yeah.
So, that's what I was thinking along that line, so.
Okay.
You wonder about, just cause they have that stuff in them, are they getting out?
Right.
You know, are they self, being how tough are they because, can't sell store?
Well, yeah, yeah, but I mean, as far as, uh, as far as the components, uh, if we wanna know what that is, I think that, you know, I think, okay, say, do it again, do it to somebody who's in the business, so that we can know what it, what it is.
Yeah, so is this, is this concept, or is this the concept that it's safe disposal of?
Correct.
Project elements.
Solar arrays, I think, I think the rest of it was green, I mean, whether it's steel or plastic.
Concrete.
concrete, those are, uh, ways of introducing these things, of those, just the.
Okay, well, I can, okay, with that, and I'll take a look for what I've got thus far. But I don't recall any very needy enough.
Sure.
Disposal and removals.
No, I don't think there is either, I just think we need to address and have a better understanding.
Yeah, and it's a legit concern of.
I think at this time, um, I think Tim and his staff are, are here. I'd like to take a few minutes recess, we'll come back into session at, uh, straight up eleven, I can, and, uh, we're gonna take about eight minutes recess, uh, so, and, uh, where are you going? We're getting through.
I'm not sure the lines have been returned.
Are they on the rear, is that true?
Yeah.
You know, that's where the best place to situate here. You can probably, yeah, that's, that's. We won't put you guys to death by, uh, you know, by PowerPoint, just thought we'd use some slides for reference for you to talk through.
Was that?
Yeah.
He, yeah, that's why Keith, I thought I'd say something about that, but.
All right, who've you got?
Well, look, you write the key, you know, the PDI or something.
All right. Well, while we're doing it, I think we can go ahead and kind of talk about the project and what it's all here for, and this is, uh, the project is centered around an astro site here, that's a radio site that'll be connected to the KCS system.
Yeah.
Kind of add coverage for your county or public safety. The project involves a couple racks of telecommunications equipment, uh, that, that's a shelter that you get for life as well as the tower itself, so.
As we started the project, the hope was to be able to utilize the power that you currently have and the structure, the building there on site in order to house the new equipment. However, when we did the inspection on the tower, which is required for the program, or the project, we found that it was overloaded, and it would not pass adding more equipment on there. So, um, in hopes of being able to keep the project going, we started looking for other towers in the area that maybe we could lease on. And so, um, uh, we found a couple of American Tower Company, uh, towers that are nearby, and, uh, we found one site that is able to be able to house the equipment for the system. However, you would have to put a new system, uh, a new shelter on there. And they, uh, the sheriff and Brad were able to find a shelter a little less expensive and be able to put that on there, they'll have to purchase, there you have the generator, uh, that possibly UPS as well, that they can put on there. Uh, another component of the previous tower, your current tower, excuse me, we would have to have connectivity back to KCS, the, the system that we want to be able to attach to. But the one problem with the current site was, we have to have that connectivity back there, and it's more dense than just internet, it has to be broadband. And at that site, uh, they would either have to dig for two miles, or we would have to put a, uh, put a, uh.
A microwave, what's, uh?
Thank you, a microwave, put a point on there, which also would be additional. So, this way, this tower that we have found for the potential use already has that broadband connectivity, but it will cause. but it will cost a monthly fee to be able to.
Two weeks.
I was leaving right there, John.
How many different towers did we have options on, Tim? Is it really?
Two.
Two?
There's one to store the whole, this one doesn't get a location. I hope we tell them it's, it's high, it's the same company, though, American Tower owns. Any other tower, we, we really need something in the central location to, to be able to improve this, I go on the floor, the guy, so.
I don't know if you can see this, I'll try to put that up on the presentation. We went ahead and ran the coverage for the two towers that were available at all terminals. This tower here, it's just down the road from the existing tower, it was the best fit. It had similar coverage, and that could probably provide us a little better coverage than the existing towers. It sits a little bit higher at four hundred feet, which allows us to put the antennas a little higher up on the tower, and cover a little bit more of the town.
And I assume, since the city of Holden is represented here, you guys were good with that, and I know you've got a.
Stay good.
Stay good, and, and more stay good.
Sounds like a better option than the original one.
Okay, thank you, I'd appreciate that.
As we said, there's fiber at this tower site, so we didn't have to, you know, come up with that, that calling to the city systems. It was definitely a, a bit of this tower as well. Just some other slides here, if there's any point of discussion, I know this is kind of small, but as Robin said, we, for this new site, we had a, a shelter we placed on the site, it was both a generator. County was going to go ahead and provide that. We scoped out the tower site itself, there's plenty of room there in that northeast corner of the, of the site, so.
And the, the building itself is a prefab of some sort, or?
Yes, it's, they're designed for radio communications, and they're, they're grounded in a particular way, that, what code is it? R fifty-six code. And we, we've located a couple, actually, that would, that would reasonable price, and, and we have a generator, a sixty K generator already, that's pretty brand new. So, we would have a little bit of, we'd have to put a pad in, but our, our staff can do that. And, the only, the only, do you, do you want to speak about anything else before I?
I just put the slide here just kind of as a reference, we were talking about using an eight foot by twelve foot shelter, which will allow for system growth, possibly another room for another two racks, if needed in the future. But this eight by twelve shelter would definitely meet our requirements as far as space and.
Is this amplitude or megahertz?
The system itself is a seven hundred, eight hundred megahertz system, so.
Light side?
Yeah. I don't have proof, Matt's on here to apologize, but.
But we're still going to reach those, those outlying areas that we were kind of struggling with.
Yeah, actually, we're in the western part of the county, we're in a little bit of shape, with Pop County has put three additional towers.
To bounce off of.
In Pop County, and so, the main area we have, I would say, is maybe at eight, eight miles or so from Holden, you know, and everything. Holden in eight miles out east of direction, but, yeah, just work this over, make a big improvement for it, especially if people are on portables in the city, of course, it has just switched eight hundred, and, you know, they're in the buildings and so forth, and schools and everything in the city, and, and we are as well all the time, so. Portable communication's a little rough right now, I'd say we're used to. Definitely, definitely when you're on the highway, or, you know, certain, certain locations in the county is, is poor, so.
Now, as far as site preparation for this, you said that staff can do this.
They just can do, take care of all that.
Okay, do you need anything from like road and bridge, or site rep level or anything, or?
I don't know, I guess I'll ask Tim about the question.
No, okay, perfect.
But it could do all.
Yeah, I mean.
Is there additional lease for the area where we're going to house the building, or is it all, hey, one money, you get back your equipment on the tower, you get to lease the, you know, place to put it?
So, yeah, they gave us location to put it, they're not really, they're basically, they're charged the same amount, regardless of the height. So, here's the particulars. It's a ten year, yeah, it's on a ten year agreement with American Towers, they are for us to. We can resort that to nine one one funds that we have.
Twenty-three hundred bucks?
Yeah. Is that somewhat standard?
It is, yeah.
Since that beam under the tower, I mean, it's a. And to, to build what we would need, we're probably around the eight hundred thousand dollar mark, I think we have to build one.
Another good point about this site is that, is the physical security is already there. So you've got the fence that goes along the road, you've got the fence running in front of it, with barbed wire, site monitor. Just to get into the site, we had to make two different phone calls, get in the first gate, and then get in the second gate, so.
What would you need from? What would you need from them to go on the contract, then, uh, I guess we just leave that up?
Well, I mean, it's the lease, right, you're just looking for, go ahead for the lease.
They haven't officially given us a contract yet, we have to fill out some information first, you know, before we, they'll give that to us.
The length is good. Four percent annual S P later.
That's pretty tough.
So, yeah, well, yeah, this is somewhat in line with what I've seen happening lately, it's just. Looks like they're, and they won the, the lease signed, or they won like a preliminary agreement, just got the setup fee, two thousand dollars.
That's, uh, that's for the tower, whatever we're putting on the tower, you know, they want to be.
They got, they analyze.
An engineer, is it an engineer that?
Yes, an engineer, I think they will do a structural in the tower, and show that, that we're playing the tower.
And that's the American Tower Company, giving their own, paying for this.
Well, it sounds like it's in a contract, they will, yeah, that they'll do the structural, is that right?
Yeah, engineer study, structural analysis.
I guess we just, you know, it's more about details now, you know, they probably don't need to take up much time to factor.
Yeah.
It looks like they're, they've got kind of an online track where they're kind of used to dealing with, not, this isn't like turning to the turner stuff. Turning to machine, and then machine spits out a agreement, and then just factor.
That's standardized, definitely.
We just need our disclaimer deal, that we put on all the contracts.
Well, that's the, the question, and I've never had to look at this before, which is the question of, you're right, the issue is always whether or not you have the ability to sign up for a long-term contract lease or otherwise.
Right, as long as they understand that Kevin can't enter into, I mean, at, at the end of, at the end of this contract, or anywhere in between, if we don't have the cash.
It's cash basis law.
It's a cash basis.
A lot of reasons to that, can we, need to be able to get you out of the event. There's exceptions for, for enterprise funds, but I don't think this counts, so.
We just need to make sure of that.
They are a tariff company that works for public safety, so they, they can't possibly be the first time that they not encounter this, I would think.
Guess we'll find out. Okay, and so, Tim, then talk about the other piece of this, or any, anything else to this? The equipment itself, it would increase a little bit?
Yeah, so, there's a new series that's, that's, it comes, it's come out, eight hundred system, so, it'll have a much longer lifespan, so. We're switching those out with no charge.
Okay. Good.
Any idea what, how much the lifespan would be for that system?
Fifteen years. Yeah, typically fifteen years will be, you'll have on the, I guess, document.
And so, we've done all the studies, we understand that, put it down in the southeast, put it down in the southwest, all corners, we're going to be able to.
We have to help cover. We have to do those projection maps.
Yeah. Because that was one of the biggest things, fire departments, we've spent a lot of money getting them to do nine hundred, or eight hundred megahertz radio, and we want to make sure that it's going to work.
And I would say that these projection maps are, are considered, because there's areas where they say that we don't, we can't talk, now we talk, so.
You have that other contract that you'll have to through, uh, K-SIX, five.
Right. Maybe look.
Do you have, what's the, what's the next drill, are you guys going to do the account setup and all that?
Yes, I'm going to get that, and then we'll get you guys the contract, and we can put through that.
So, I, I would say, there's point in time, it's a general consensus at this board, if we can do it right now.
Yes.
To the city official record, that we're going to move ahead, enter into a lease, once we get the lease, and our attorney's put it over, then we'll make a formal motion. You agree?
Yep.
I was going to ask, do you have a copy or a picture of your antenna? I'm curious about that.
If it is, it's a ten foot and ten nine, can you give you the specs on it?
I'm curious, because, does it have bays on it?
Does it what?
Bays, like a radio?
Uh, no, sir, this is just an omnidirectional hole.
Okay.
So it's about twenty-five pounds, ten foot tall, just a, just the pipe.
I have a third glass, so. Tim, will this slow down the, the chemical contamination of this?
Well, we, we had a projection date in May, I, I don't know if switching up the trucks delayed that or not, we haven't, have that confirmed yet.
We do have to return the, the previous equipment, and then order the other equipment, so it could delay it, you know, just depending on length of time, so it could be, could be six months of a delay.
Is that going to affect your grant?
No, it shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Okay, just trying to think through, what time to sure you have.
One of our most recent shipments served is about four, about four months, of the time it's awarded, so, if we can get that equity going back, and we can have it.
Now, I know, four months, six months seems like a lot, but it's, we wanted to do a good save, had the tower been up to snuff or whatever, I mean, this would probably already be done, and then, what we would call a G-series computers, which now is our D-series, would already be up there, and that's getting alive in twenty thirty-two. So, with this not being done yet, we thought, why would we put that up there instead of going ahead and put the D-series on there? So we went and actually went up there with the, and then, kind of fight internally to get the D-series put on there, which extend you all the way out to.
Okay.
So, just, it thought it made sense to us, and we had to get approval from up above, so, which will save a lot of potential money in twenty thirty-two when it goes into life.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Just thinking about it.
Immense versus broadband direct connection.
Just got to keep telling yourself it's better than that one, better than that one.
But it was so exciting back then.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we're talking about coverage, this is the new tower site, this is estimating an empty coverage, some coverage from mobile radio, yeah, coverage. It does include the coverage from the surrounding, surrounding, the green, so you are, like I said, part of the K-SIX system, so the interoperability is there as well, and we're with the other side of the town. You know, with the one tower in the area, we could probably, likely cover the area a little bit better with two towers, but the one tower actually has pretty, pretty good coverage. There's a little bit of area down here in the southeast corner, I'm assuming that's all ravine and trees and, that's a little light areas. What I will say is, there was an area right, uh, mid-county on the left, on the west side, that was, you can see a little bit of white there, there's, there's towers, and it covers that area, it's a little bit of the other. The top northeast, I don't know if you can see it from where you're at, but, if I can load some. Actually, I think it's on another slide. Okay, so this is the, the city itself kind of loading up, and this is looking at portable coverage, so. The city itself is pretty much covered for portable coverage. The, there is some lighter coloring there to kind of show you what it would look like in building, and what we do is, we run it with a little bit of moss there, so it kind of represents a sixty B or a medium-sized building versus, say, a large-sized building with lots of concrete, you know, and rebar. But as you can see, the, the city's pretty much blanket for coverage, for portable coverage, so. Once you get some of those little lighting areas out in the east, or even southeast, you will see some portable, portable coverage diminishing there, but with the mobile radios being the vehicles, and that you're on the road, you're going to be using that more, I radio, so. It's, it's looking pretty good for the community. Were there any, any other questions, or?
I don't think so, I don't believe so.
I don't think we have any other questions, I think, like, like I said, you know, we'll move ahead with this, get the right documents to leak, or to. Oh, you knew I was going to do that. You're better looking.
I know that.
So, yeah, get those documents, and we'll move ahead with it, it sounds like you've already taken care of the funding part, and that's always the hard part, right? Seems like it. I appreciate all the hard work you guys have put into this, I, I really do, it's, in talking to firefighters and stuff, they're really excited about this, and I'm sure your personnel, knowing that they're going to be able to get out of the car, on chase or whatever that may be, and have a handheld that's going to actually work. It is, it's really, really cool, well, I'm excited, it's some of the best money I think we've ever seen.
Change things for sure, it's more. All burdens, it's everything, so. Thank you very much.
So he's on more too? Yeah, and we really, I, I just want you to know, we really appreciate working with the city of Holden, and just the fact that we're working together. I, I think that's great, because at the end of the day, we all serve the community, right?
Correct.
The whole town.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Did you, did this dad or catch that little silver race car driver in Holden, or is that already? Did you, uh, did this, got or catch that little silver race car driver in Holden, or is that already? Hey, uh, yeah. Glad to hear.
Pretty much.
I don't know, I don't know, okay, let's see what's the size.
Jim, thank you, appreciate it.
I, I, you guys have forgotten, I just didn't, anyone to say. Is it attached? How are you today? Yeah, comprehensive, like.
It's all of it.
They do it?
Today. Should not hurt you.
I wouldn't doubt it.
The what? So, you're pleased with the, yeah, the new?
Are we in recess? Sorry, are we in recess? All right, there you go. All right, Kate?
Yeah, she'll be back.
Can anybody answer, we're in recess, or if we're still in the meeting?
We're in session, sir.
You're in session, okay. That conversation that you were having with her just a minute ago, what was that?
When Kate gets back, I'll rest. We revise it? You know, raise the plan, or the? Okay. Do we need to have a hand?
What was I supposed to email you all about?
Email? Um, probably just a conversation you had with, 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 remember that was absent? And whether they were gonna keep committing to coming?
Yes, I did, had a conversation, and yes, she is.
Good.
Yeah.
And then, do you want to be involved this afternoon, or more than welcome to be here, um, during the interviews? It's up to you.
Sure.
Okay, love to have you down, we'll, we'll just give you a holler, there'll be anything in session, each one will, and we'll just invite you in. I believe we can do interviews for board members, of employees, though? That's a good point. No, we, we can't, because we did, we did the interviews for an executive session for the economic development.
All employees.
By mistake, yeah, they were, they were gonna be an employee, where this wouldn't have been, yeah, so, there'll be no.
Well, okay, I got a question, and how can school boards interview superintendent candidates in executive session?
Employees, employees, employees.
Future employee.
Future employees.
Future employees, that's not correct, they're, they're, commissioners are not employees or officers.
Yeah.
And they're specifically not paid.
Yep.
Right. That was my mistake, I, I'm all good.
Yeah.
You have to bring the delegate special. Probably not, I'll bring Ben, please. I was concerned about your health, man.
Yeah, I know, I'll be there.
Did you wanna walk down to the, to the, to the, or?
The sanitary, or the book, which was?
Any of it, did you have anything that you wanted to walk through?
No, I just wanted you guys to see what Martha had to say about the, the resale portion of the sanitary. Because it sounds like there's gonna be some state stuff going on that will essentially move us backwards, and I don't.
Well, I, I was gonna take a look at that, because what, I think what the commission came up with as kind of a standpoint was that, uh, the, the inspections for tenants just seems to be overkill. Inspection for sales, mm, but not, not dealing it. So, we're thinking of just building a first construction is it, but I'm gonna check state law, insurance, and processing. State law, I'm doing, it's, it's just too many. But again, I, I don't, I reached out to Chana County until a month ago, had a conversation with their person. That's what they informed us, that her meaning that they were doing it there, um, doesn't mean that she didn't know what they're talking about, maybe.
Or that there's not something in the pipeline on a state level.
Correct, that's a good point.
So, I think that's all Martha was saying.
She thinks there may be some future legislation, will deal with that in the process.
Yeah, I don't.
I don't like to anticipate that too much.
No.
I don't anticipate that it's gonna reduce your revenue, because I think, and I get it, part of the revenue is derived from these inspections, but, that's like saying to the city cop in, in particular city, that, you know, your job depends on how many tickets you write. We can't do that. I don't think it's right for citizens to do that, so, I, I'd like to really dig into this and make sure that we, we can do it.
Um, and she just referenced, uh, the, the part that you go about it, about where those are.
Does it, which go?
The sanitary.
Sanitary, good.
And there is a copy of that code in the front of your box.
Okay, thank you.
And, any new development on private cemetery?
You guys gave me the, was it the, the acreage order, Eric? Is that right?
Yeah, that was probably, it's probably on me yet, you wanna?
Well, I guess, do you have amendments now in process?
But, um, now, it's all good.
Okay, so I was just gonna, pretty much, maybe that, I wanna share your, your stuff, so, I guess, I, okay. Oh, that's, yeah, I was, I think we got everything, and we didn't have any other input on, on version B side, I had a problem. I was working on it, I came in with. My actual. So, yeah, the only thing I have is one, was, no site should be larger than. Yeah, unless you guys have any other changes, that was, I don't know.
I think, uh, I was just, uh, all, all we're waiting on is the size, I believe.
And, Kate, I, I don't, you probably read this note, of what you said, under the environment, it said, you, do we require a renewed sale? That it has to be, um, their office that does the inspection, and they get any licensed septic inspector to come out?
It's a license.
Just license? So?
Approved by the board to? Well, it says we administer an A D C on the stack.
Okay, so, that was one of the other things we talked about, is, is putting some options in there, if, if there's other sanitary inspectors around. The problem is that if you guys have a new local, in the local agreement, you said, how, yes, yeah. So, we said, because of that, we would have, we would, so we use that.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah, I don't, right around that.
The larger you wanna keep so invested, and make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's probably so, because like I said, it's, this is just extraordinarily broad, what our, uh, numbers were compared to the other counties.
Yeah, and, and, you know, just, it only takes about twenty minutes to drive around the county, and you can see, probably, eighty percent would be deemed failing, but we're not inspecting those on spot yet, it's only if you sell your property. And so, to me, the only thing we're doing is we're, we're incurring a fee on the public, just because they're selling their property, I mean.
Or renters, or.
Or renters, and, I mean, all the rest of them, because I'm not selling my property, I can do it, you know, like, it can be deemed failing, because the tree's growing up, and if they're not keeping it low, the fence isn't exactly one inch off the ground, or touching the ground, or, you know, those types of things.
Yeah, did I share those numbers with you, the forty-one, and that's closer to sixteen?
What kind of systems do we have, you know, if we're talking about, we got, I mean, we got septic and lateral. Right. Anything else, you got?
Opened, yeah.
Opened, yeah, yes. So, I would say, I would venture to say, it's maybe seventy percent open to boot, because of Jackson County play? It's not, you can't, okay, so, it, it will perk out, and we don't use perks up anymore, that's.
Like I said, that's, that's, I'm sure that's what you said up here, is we don't perp you much, so.
So, therefore, it becomes this requirement to make sure the bungs and corals aren't getting under the fence, into the lip, into the, the open, and that we have a padlock, so, yeah, those types of things, free, yeah, trimmed down. But again, we're not going around the county, going, that was failed, that was failed.
The only thing they're doing at this point of maximum pressure, where they're, gotta sell, they gotta sell on the boat, yeah.
Right.
Now you're jumping in.
Yeah, and, and the fact, not only that, but if the sale comes up, and you need it inspected within ten days or less, they're gonna charge you a dish for a hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, it just seems like, uh, a bit wrong, and this is, yeah, usually, uh, but. Let's keep, let's keep digging into it, let's find out, I guess, then, uh, what other counties are doing, and how we can approach that. Does that replace this?
It replaces everything, that's, that's the whole, the most.
It replaces a beautiful old.
No, no, this is my part.
That's all I have.
Okay, so, you have a copy of the draft of the, of the solar regs?
Yep, we do that.
You, yep, we can dive back through that, and spend the rest of the morning on that. Do you have anything, and you had a chance to read over any of it?
I have not had a chance.
Wow.
Yeah, I know.
Okay, I got through, um, okay, I think that, page, page five.
Okay.
And you're, she's on, she's mark one. But that's, the only thing that have changed between that one and this one, or was it our highlight?
And we've added J, K, first page of the chart, as concerns.
It said you added J from K from this one?
Um, the front on the, you don't, yeah, the second, need the second, you're burdened to, to see.
The ten-six point one?
Yeah, yeah. Should say on the top. Word two, right. Nope, this is it, this is the, the master, so we've added, for this part, concerns, or concerns, J safety commission, removal and reclamation. Okay, safe disposal project, uh, solar project, that's, we're looking like we're gonna need somebody independent, kinda tell us what the dangers are, the damage panels.
The makeup.
Disposing, is it? Any much of lead, or other?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I gave you a, and I, copy, and I've got, those are the professors, K state, that run engineering, for me.
Oh, what?
Oh, yeah, I, I talked to, with the act.
Oh, yeah.
You wanna do it?
I, I would do it in men, so they're terrible. I, I would do it in men, so they're terrible.
Uh, yeah, sure, for sure. I wonder if you can tell you the airspace overlay over corporate area.
Or is that?
Page twenty-three, thirteen. The, there's, there's more meaty stuff about air force and stuff, but.
Yeah, it's in one of the other county regulations.
Yeah. Well, do you guys have any airspace overlay, listen? Because we have, uh, I believe it's Ford, Forbes Field, they, they have aircraft for yours that fly in this region.
And also.
Rose trains.
Rose trains.
Yeah.
Uh, Junction City.
Yeah, or Riley, or Riley.
Helicopters up there.
Does it fly the route?
Yeah, so you have, you also have a lap doctor at Forbes also.
Uh. I, I don't know. Just for the place.
It's pretty simple, this, it's not.
I, I, I think on this here though, the, okay, I like the airway overs, overs, but within five miles of any air strip, I think I'd like that to remain within five miles of any commercial or military air strip.
Correct.
Not just any air strip.
Like private, uh.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah, we don't want the red bear over. Commercial.
Commercial or military.
You have a military air strip?
Some flying, flyer or something.
Well, yeah, I forget that, just.
Well, let's just say, or within, and or within five miles of any airs, commercial or military air strip is what I do need to read.
Yeah, now this, I think that Forbes is probably in that airspace overlay. Or is that even a thing? I don't know, it's just, I'm not driving around. Yeah, I just thought that was like a regular quarter thing, quarter of the path.
Yeah.
They aren't, we don't identify overlay district, right? Anywhere? No, but, we got a, we got documents from them maybe a year and a half ago, two years ago, that we have a flush air thing, something, something like that, that we said, you change, sort of, part of it's been run this way, this way, and.
Yeah, I, I think it was Rose Crans or Omaha was coming down, they wanted to go south of the Wiggles, if I remember correctly, oh, we did sign off on it, and that was.
Well, there's something, they always know what houses were in, in a certain strip, in Jackson County.
No.
And that was Fort Riley's.
Yeah, I like that.
Military flight work area.
They have the, I think there was a, they had more of the space out there that. Fly really low. Yeah, everybody's there. Maybe that needs to be, maybe looking at that for, because it doesn't seem to me, but, we don't have it, we don't have it zoned, or any of that zoning about airspace.
We don't have some constraints, a military.
Yeah, that's what we, we can do that, but I'm just thinking of the external things, like, because they say, you know, this is a military zone, you can do actually, I don't know what that would be. But maybe they say, maybe it should be where there's something to be effective.
It's done, it does.
Yeah, yeah, they, they've gotta show compliance of all.
Okay.
So that's the way to do it, take that, show.
My understanding is you can access that by finding how light and habits around, um, county.
Yeah, I don't know that they hear that, I mean.
I question the same thing, why would they wanna make that public, but I understand you, it is. I had a conversation with the journalist, raised it well, several months ago, wanting to know what we've done, so we have to.
Okay, well, fourteen, H twenty-fourteen says bond requirement, so we just wanna change that. Take out bond, escrow account, financial security, so, letter credit. So.
Yeah, I want escrow or something, I don't want bond mentioned anywhere in here.
Okay. Um, and that's, you're good with that, it's solely about an estimated cost of decommissioning and reclamation. But I guarantee you they have.
And I want it for the, the roads, I want everything under escrow, not bond. Every fund that they're, that they're going to provide, whatever going to be, uh, comes up with this, the resiliency fund, the declamation, uh, the, the roads, everything, I, I don't want a bond tied to any of that. You want it all in separate, separate, uh, road.
Yep. Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's a good concept, because there's a difference that here is that. I mean, the roads are supposed to be for damage to them, so that would be established and paid and not, you know, it's not a savings kind of concept, but you're not making, you're not making the draws from their account by request. They're paying you an amount that's here.
Right, so, well, it's the, the whole two fifty-four, having to sue them to get the money out of that, right?
We had to, we, we never had to sue, we had to front sue.
Yeah.
And so.
I wanna go through that.
Yeah. Yeah, and I, and I get, but what I'm saying is, is that the theory is, they, you gotta tell them the number, they pay it to you and they, they don't have a right to say anything about it. Correct, so we, so like two fifty-four, we, we personnel went out, videotaped the road, the condition of it, took lots of pictures, and then once, once it was done, that we had an independent engineering firm go out and evaluate the roads. And then they came up with a dollar amount to bring the roads back into the condition that they were prior to the construction, that's the number we submitted, and eventually they wrote us a check. It took a while, um, and I think that's why, if there's money in escrow, and you help us understand this, if we, if we just determine that it's eight hundred thousand and a million sitting there, is there still negotiation? I mean, do we have to do something in order to retrieve that?
That's, that's the question, I, I think it's, my mind is like a, there's a light switch, I mean, and that's the real reason why they're gonna do, do business, because you would say, there's a point at which we just flip the switch and that money that's in that account comes to us.
Right.
And there isn't any, well, you know, we gotta make application for a hundred thousand a year, a hundred thousand a year, no, it's not, it's all in our hands, and we have to do, we have to clean it up, but that's ours.
Yeah, because this, this will be an ongoing, uh, process throughout the life of the special use program.
Yeah.
So, you know, road bridge goes out and they've red up a minimum maintenance road out there or whatever, so we gotta go in and fix that, so we'll pull money out of that escrow account, go out and fix that. They've crushed the tube here, so we gotta pull money out of that to fix the tube.
And what I'm trying to, real nuanced, I'm trying to get there, is what requirements do you want accountability to them about that use? I'm thinking less about.
You mean, that I don't want them to have, you ask me nicely, I want you saying, this is what, we're taking this money, and if you start out with the idea, this is what we estimate the money to be, and we get it, and it's in our hands, then, that all just kinda goes by the wayside, and the only question is, what happens if, if it really, you know, knocked into, out of park of damage? And how it did, you know, meaning, the less, I mean, the less we have, I don't wanna get into a bureaucratic fight with both guys about which, which dollars would be used. I wanna have it sitting there, and then you guys decide it's used, and it's used, and that puts you guys in products.
So.
And it's just a matter of what are we, what are we putting out there as being?
So, so my way of thinking on that is, uh, and, and, there being, we're kinda spitting in wind, seeing, you know, where it goes, what sticks, because until, until these are done, until we know the, the location of the project, we know how many roads are gonna be impacted. That's when the negotiation for this escrow account will come up, if we have fifteen miles of road out there that they're going to impact. So, what's it gonna cost to rock those roads every year to keep them up, so on and so forth?
Yeah, this, this goes back to those tiers I talked about, which is administrative tier versus income or this tax tier. What is natural process of pocket, you gotta turn it backwards, what is taxation element of this thing that you're getting from, because they're, you know, doing business in Canada just like anybody else? And you, they pay taxes because they pay taxes, not because you gotta fix the road right next to it. So, we're trying, trying to get in my head how that, how these elements all fit together, and what, we're talking about now is an actual cost, and it needs to be in hand, and the only thing we're talking about is being third, is being what is, if they can, for us and them as far as how that's used.
Because unless they do, as they did, as the company did with the hauler out. They brought a, they hired a grader, brought a grader in, and he was up and down the road, and they were dumping rock on the road, and, as they were going. Oh, yeah, they had a great, they hired an operator from, where was he from? I've stood up here and talked to him for a long time, Salina, I believe it was. And, yeah, they rocked the roads, and when they got reded up, they brought more rock in, he created, and he, he went along the whole haul route. So, during, during this time, during the construction phase, if they will agree to keep the roads up to the standards that they are, or build them up to the county standards, if it's a minimum maintenance road, right? Then if they agree to take care of the roads that way, uh, and stand the cost for it during the construction phase, I'm fine. Once they're done, then that's when the escrow would come into play with, you know, we estimate for these roads, it's going to be, it's going to cost us, you know, three hundred thousand dollars a year to up, to maintain these roads around the system.
That would be an escrow, that would be a, a, a direct payment that we would factor into that thing, a rule.
Okay.
If that's, that's.
Escrow or bond would be simply for deconstruction. Yeah, I can see, I can see both ways, but I like the pilot idea better, just because I'm, that's what, I'm going back to this thing about us having to negotiate with use of money that we should have.
What about for the resiliency as far as required forms, everything like that?
Those are all factors in.
That's gonna be a, another factor in?
And, and those will all be things that, that, you know, so it would be easy enough for a road bridge department to say, okay, if this road beats our standards, it's gonna cost X number, if they have enough history, they can say, okay, it's gonna cost five dollars over a, a year to maintain this to the standard that it is. So that they have access to their facility any time of day.
Okay.
It would not be the full amount, because we don't do that to anybody else, you build a business, but to maintain them for a period of time, I think you wanna build that into a pilot, uh.
So then with that.
Also, also your, your school districts and whoever, whoever else, I mean.
So your, your pilot is gonna be, you know, we talked about, uh, renegotiated every three years or whatever, or every year?
For the.
For the pilot.
Not for the pilot.
That's a, ongoing for thirty years.
Yeah.
Right.
But, so, so then, see, that, there again, we need to be able to renegotiate for the road part of that every year, because rock goes up.
Right.
Increases in your wages, increase in your tubes, so on and so forth, so you'd have to be able to renegotiate that every year.
And I'm fighting, just like the lease that we just signed here, or that we looked at here today, they have a four percent increase.
Okay.
What was the word they used?
Escalator.
Escalator.
Thank you. So, so, yeah.
So either renegotiated every year or.
I don't think we'd have to renegotiate, I think we just put in a.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to avoid here, is trying to, yeah, leave it back for. Look, I, I look at it, this is the way I kinda look at it, we have three checkbooks and one savings, the savings is the decommissioning, which we believe it's going to be in thirty years, that money sits there. The checkbooks, we're able to take out money from the checkbooks for resiliency, for the pilot, for, uh, road construction, and that way we look forward, see, it's want, you know, you're right, it's the road, rock, wages, fuel, is gonna change, and the four percent may cover it. But the decommissioning, we should not touch, but we, they should continue to build towards that, and the pilot is a, a solid one time per year payment, like Neale County does.
Well, and I, and here's what my big distinction is, is the fact that. You got, there, there's impacts that they have, that are special impacts, and there are impacts that they have legitimate, and there, the more we get into tracking and nickel and diming ourselves about all these things, I, I don't think that's where we should be going. You guys should pick a number that is based on reality, is based on the concept, but is, is gonna cover that, and possibly more, because that's, you know, you don't, the, the fact, you can anticipate everything that comes in, is not something that a government body has to do, if it's truly taking the taxation element and applying it, so.
Yeah.
You know, nobody sits there and goes, okay, I'm paying my real estate taxes for my, my house, and I noticed that my road hasn't, you know, or, or the fire department doesn't kind of this, you don't do that.
Right.
You say, this is the tax, oh, pay it, and you may not get anything for it, real, realistically over a year or two year flight, but that's a tax, it's not supposed to directly reflect what we're doing, and I, I wanna keep us in two zones here being, one, we've got a protection element of something, like you said, the closeout, but the rest is a taxing concept. And that's what you pay, do business in our county, and we're getting enough, not only cover the road, but cover everything else.
Right.
And did we hit it exactly?
No.
We don't, we don't have to.
Right. Also, this is the first I've heard, that they actually brought out their own subcontractor to work on the roads, I don't like that idea, because it takes away from us, we still have a liability, we don't know what this situation could have hurt for us.
And I, and I don't personally have a problem with it, if they're maintaining that area, they're putting a tube in, because we don't have manpower to do it.
Yeah, I mean, he was constantly up and down, up and down the haul route.
So, that.
The whole time.
That's why we hire a, an individual at their cost to maintain that, so he's out there going, okay, maintain, you're, you're not keeping this up, or we got mud in the road, or whatever that is, I don't, I don't care if they hire a subcontractor to do that, I really don't, because our road bridge department, we don't have enough people now to get fairly done. I do think it's communication between our public works director and management team with that individual who's doing the inspection.
I figured you guys had known that, they had hired.
That was before, before us.
But, you know, we have others out there that are asking, well, why can't I go do it, I could do just as good a job designing equipment, you know, and you know who I'm busy with.
We're, we're getting the new here, but.
Yeah.
I, I think, you know, we would have the ability to give someone permission to be in the road, we've done it before, on a haul route where they have extended tubes, where they can get around corners, docks.
I mean, that seems to me to be, I, I can see the whole side of that, I mean, I, because I don't know if there's a liability issue for him, it's not the end, just because somebody goes in the road and starts. As a subcontractor.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, you think about it, you're, I, now. Yeah, well, I think, you know, you think about it, now I'm thinking about it now, the, the problem is if they're doing the.
Yes, they got tube out, leave a hole there with no cur, well, grate marking, someone comes down and hits them, boom, yeah, that's a liability.
Yeah, well, the way, the way this stretch went up down haul route, I mean, they, do you look on my corner, just, you know, because you're gonna get it.
Maybe something Scott too, just to see, but, I mean, the general idea is, if, you know, I think there is a difference between, you know, a big construction company doing it, you know, so.
We agree.
Yeah.
You know, so I, I don't, I think there's a difference, so.
Okay.
We're gonna recess for lunch, how are you?
Andy.
Good.
Andy, how you doing?
Not too bad. That's had all kinds of security down here, it's just kinda simple, so.
Well, we almost called.
It's you too.
It's all, it's all good.
I'm pretty excited, just letting you know.
It's all good. So, um.
You guys got it from here?
I think so, uh, we'll come back at, uh, one and we'll meet at third. All right. You got changes on it, can you say something to me, first off?
What is it?
Changes on the solar, she had come up.
Um, coral?
Yeah. Well, probably a better deal for her. Sell another liquor license probably, or a package for her. Or can they transfer, I don't think they're keen, so.
Yeah.
So that'll be for that.
Hello. We are back in session.
And, uh, while the company come out there and say, he needs, uh, right, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna move the road tomorrow.
Okay. So you just need an order?
Yes.
No issue with them?
No.
Okay.
You know, maybe, so you, yeah, you call whatever.
I'm just gonna start calling them scoot.
See who you're paying attention for, so.
I'm used to that type of.
Beyond these pipes, I don't think they, beyond these pipes, I don't think they work here.
You didn't hear me, did you?
No, I didn't.
I renamed you Scoot.
Scoot.
I scooped back then, I scooped.
You now have, uh, you told me. Oh yeah. About the, the, what you're talking about? I think the first thing I wanted, um, again, what time does he do his work? Have a good day. I like him, good delivery.
Is, uh, I mean, if he's back in the room.
Uh, that's why I asked, if he'll take that.
Well, it's supposed to be, uh, feeling today, we're stopped, so.
Okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
All right.
Can it be? I don't know, it is. Yeah, yeah, Keith.
What's that? Oh, yeah.
I got that in my basket, just wondering for me today.
And did you use, uh, Oz letter to send it?
Yes.
Yeah, it was a well-written, I thought it was well-written. Did you reach out to him?
I did, because he was gonna be there. And then when I got back, I found out things had changed.
Yeah.
So I sent it up to him and then he talked with Kate, found out a little bit more.
Good call.
I heard.
Don't wanna be left out.
Mark here next. I said hi.
Oh, Andy.
Yeah, so you're fine.
Have you, yeah. Why, oh, I said hi earlier. I just came here, this glass system over here is noisy.
I'm sitting right next to it.
I got ringing in my ear going, like.
Yeah.
What you got going on there?
Trying to get the, uh, inside of our building furniture.
Oh.
So, these are all of the things that I've been the lowest pricing on that have been the, uh, not the lowest quality.
Yeah.
So.
Very.
Right. So, this is just kind of the overall cost of everything and I've got the. So I have not received the check yet from, it has been, I just gotta get it picked up.
And it has been issued?
Yes, it has been issued, uh, one of our board members has it currently, so we'll be turning that in, so that's where you see the pricing, that will, uh, affect that, uh.
But the chunk, and that's a double door stainless.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I've got that up here, that's why I just get to do it. Where do you get one of these fridges at?
K home, restaurant supply.
Uh, the fridge, the fridge that I got is on West Front.
Yeah, West Front.
And that's, um.
Cause I, I checked local here before, we, you know, and they pointed us in that direction, so this is, I like the building, so, uh. Now, market knowledge is still a business of being, you can do it here.
And then this is, these are the cars that you recommended, um, for the chairs.
Yep.
Yeah. And then so that's what, two of those, um, this is just kind of a, I think, get us started amount, and then we'll go from there.
Big ground, nice thing on that.
I mean, I think this is a whole other, uh, and, uh, this is for the fridge. But, uh, I look back at it, it doesn't show the picture very well.
Yes, that's. Here's a ton of rolls, you moved them clean, huh?
Yes. Um, had people use, um, nothing from the company that was selling it, um.
When you say this was reps, West Front?
Yeah.
They're good.
Yeah, I think they're still on their stuff and it sounds like that's what Brian, uh, told me.
Yep. We're going from that before.
Uh, to try and get, uh, I looked at the black, like you said.
Mm-hmm.
The tables.
Yeah.
I, I, and I know one around you. Your closest had the black.
Really?
Yeah, to do, to do that many. Um, so those, uh, I think that we, we're more than sufficient to get us going with this amount of tables and chairs. Uh, and with, uh, I would say tables probably, I don't know if we need any more than that, but I could see possibly maybe needing some more chairs.
But did you?
Because this, this, right, right now, eighteen tables, and that gives you five extra to, you know, place on the outside.
Eighteen or twenty-three?
Well, eight, I figured eighteen of them won't have chairs.
Okay.
Eighteen, eighteen tables, a hundred and four, cause those carts that you sent me, uh, both seventy-two chairs apiece.
Yep.
So that's a hundred and forty-four and, and then the next, if, if we need some more chairs, we can run them.
Start, start with that, see what you got.
And I think that, but. No question is, um, did you get a cart full of tables? I did not, I, I went around and, and it's not a real big building, and I asked, uh, went to, and I know putting the tables and chairs away, when you get twenty of those tables on there, they get extremely heavy, to try and roll them back in, and I just, I find that even at our church, we just go in and grab them out one by one every time, and.
But are you gonna put them on the floor or?
Um, I mean, get the can.
I would, I would think that a cart for those would be better.
Just store them?
Even if you have two of them, you know, ten tables on them, cause I think that's what we have, is, uh, two carts for the tables, ten tables per cart.
And that would be something. I don't know, you're gonna be hooking them up all the time, so, you know. Well, I think that would be, you know, if, part of their, you know.
Yeah.
Process of.
Yeah.
You're getting them out and get it back.
Yeah, look, look at it, when you get it in there and see, cause I think, you know, you want the, you know, the little parts and. Well, three things goes just on one end.
So do you want approval on, see your collective later? Well, uh, uh, this is the, this is the, that we, uh, kind of looked at. I think the final, the final thing that I am still on, and I'm still researching trying, is, is the ice machine, that's the, the thing that's, you know, there's lots of differences in.
Yeah.
And I've got someone coming this week that is familiar with them, to try and quickly stir me the right way, to ask some experience with them and say yes and no on this, and kind of, I, I.
Would you do one?
I think so.
The, and the thing is, you don't wanna get a small one, it's not gonna serve, but you don't wanna get a huge one because then the ice will sit in the bin and get hard, and you don't want people going in there with an ice pick and, you know.
Right. Right, right. But you also need one if you have more big events that.
Yes.
Someone comes in the next day, it would be horrible.
Yep.
So, I'm still, still working on that, but, uh, as you can see on the, on the spreadsheet, that's what the total covered cost is gonna be to, to cap up. But I need permission to, I guess, spend the total amount like that, is, is my goal of this, what I brought before you today. So, on, on my.
Uh, correct. Anybody have any questions or discussions before we entertain a motion to purchase the roof, the amount would be the ninety-eight point six four.
Yep.
Done here. Pretty well laid out.
Well, that's just trying to give you.
Yeah, I think it's.
You, you want to have a consensus, right?
No, I, I don't like a motion, and then that way you could do a P O and.
I'll move that we spend nine thousand eight hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for a double door refrigerator, stove, tables and chairs, chair parts. Uh, this will be less the Prairie Band donation of six thousand nine hundred dollars when it comes in for a real cost of two thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and fifty-six cents.
I'll second that, move to second even.
Aye.
And then I'll, I'll be able to, to turn the, turn the receipts in to our president, Matt McLeake, and then lift them in that and be reimbursed back into that.
How many chairs come to container?
I don't know.
Because I went down and picks, picked up two pallets, they were the church, and that one, that was extra than they got, and they're on a four by five.
Right, so that, that might be, that might collection a few chairs or whatever to.
But I mean, so when you go down, take the trailer.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, yeah, that's, that's pretty well, that, I mean, get, we're, uh, waiting on our cleaner right now, once she can get in there and, uh, put the final touches on it. Um, got my grass growing up, so, uh, that's, that's looking nice. But, uh, I called Scott, uh, he thought it'd be two weeks before he could get in there to start working on the, the, uh, the gravel parking lot again. Got over, I said, I'd like to get it printed out in December. And, uh, that's kind of a trial, a trial run first, uh, uh, see, I mean, you see what, see how much, I mean, we're, we're gonna have, you know, and then, you know, probably officially, officially opening it up, you know, first of the year.
And when you get over the drama?
First of December.
We're all invited to come and serve.
That's really, it's my daughter's graduation party.
What about small wares for the kitchen?
Small what?
Small wares for the kitchen.
Small wares?
Tongs, uh, ladles, you know, flippers. I mean, most kitchens that you go to for these type of events have small wares included. So, just, you know.
I, I think this, the way this event will be used will be more of people coming in catering, and if they're coming in.
And they're, I, I do understand that, but stirring iced tea in the ju, I mean, in the, you know, what I'm saying is, I think that you probably better think about that, about some small wares that you go, that will stay with the venue.
That, that's very, yeah, that, that's not a big.
Regardless. It's not, it's not that big of a deal, but it goes, you thought about that enough.
Yeah, I just, my, the last kind of hurdle is figuring out what to charge for this thing.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's what we've been.
First you said you pay whatever you want.
Well, yeah.
I can clean.
Yeah, yeah. But, so that's, that's kind of what we're, we're at with our, cause we're, you know, you, you look at comparable venues like of size, but we're also offering more with, you know, the views and everything that you have out there that, that makes us a little different, you know, uh.
Uh, what did, and I don't, I don't remember owning, I know, what does, uh, heritage cost?
Uh, I believe it's in the ballpark, it's a hundred dollars for a, like, a wedding.
And is this as big as heritage square foot wise?
No.
Okay, you're gonna kind of look at that and kind of see.
Yeah, but also we're offering, you know, a full chapel and views and good things that you're not getting.
Sure, so I, I.
But, it's nice to have it as a view, I think what we're doing at right now is offering it as a free day wedding package, where you, you pay X amount of money, you get it Friday, Saturday and Sunday.
Mm-hmm.
Because a lot of people, you know, struggle to try and get it cleaned up that night, you know, and that allows you to maybe the next day to, you know, back in, getting it picked up that you need to and, and.
And I think that's what they do out here is still noon the next day, I think.
And you gotta pay for it though, this, you know, if you want the extra day, I think we're just gonna, with, for, for building purposes and for everything, I think this is the set price, this is what you get.
Yeah.
There's no taking off the day or adding to the, I mean. I think that would be for, uh, all intents and purposes, the easiest way and cleanest way to, that way it would not happen to, I, I, and then the price of, you know, like it being cleaned is gonna be in, in the actual price. So that way, uh.
I agree.
That way we know it's getting cleaned to, uh, our standards.
Yeah.
I mean, those will be some things we expect you to do is gonna pick up, sweep it, but we're not, getting it be cleaned, like, make sure it's ready.
Gonna do a deposit too, that way they get it back when it's fully cleaned and everything.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get away from that, so the fact that your card will be on file, be held for damages is, is the way I wanna do that.
Sure.
Just because i- it is real messy and if you, if you, someone pays with a card and then you gotta go refund the card.
Oh, I see, yeah.
So, I think this is the amount it is, your card will be held on file, like, like a, uh.
Like a hotel.
Like hotels, you know, for any damage, or anything, not a, you got it.
Good idea.
Yeah.
I like that.
So, that way, once you're done, you're done, we don't have to provide any money back to you unless, or, or your car being charged.
True.
You know, and working out, if, you know, figure out the, the logistical side of what.
So like, like, and, okay, so you talked about the wedding package, so if somebody wants to host a dance out there, uh, you know, Saturday night, so Saturday night, and then for Saturday, set up blah, blah, blah from noon till whenever, till noon on Sundays, you got a chance to get it cleaned up.
So you just be, you have to pay for two days. I mean, it, we're gonna be at, outside of the wedding package, you know, it's a daily, you know, deal, but that's, that's.
But is that a twenty-four hour day, is what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, like, like they get it at noon, they clean it up and get out of there by noon, is that a twenty-four hour package, that's something you gotta think about too on that.
Well, within your, you kind of, I, I think a, a day would be, you know, morning to night, instead of, you would have to label it that way, because then you're losing out on something that once you rent it on Sunday in the morning, you wouldn't be able to do that anymore because they're going from noon to noon, so, you know, I think if you start. if you start, I mean, yeah, those are all good, all good things, that's why, I, I, that's the last part that's really been a little, uh, the fee is.
Yeah, no, I didn't.
We need to make enough money at the same time, you know, and still, uh, the community, you know, you know, building for people to use that will.
Yep.
So, I mean, I've got my invoice, I know it's gonna be clean, but I still don't know what it's gonna cost, I need to do this thing and walk. I mean, but unfortunately the way my bills are laid out, that's kind of, it's impossible for me to, to exactly, when I'm, I'm getting a full electricity bill for the whole place, so. So, break that out. And then the water bill is the same.
But does it have a meter for that?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take that back. There, there won't be a separate meter for that, but like, I've been a, a water bill for the entire, you know, stuff here. So you, you have, I don't know how much you're using there, but.
Electricity, yeah. I think the electricity being the bigger part than the water, you go unless somebody leaves the toilet running or leaves the faucet running, something like that. It's gonna be a minor, uh, minor expense on that one. Got a question, where, how did my head? I don't remember.
Yeah, no, so, yeah, any. Yeah, that's, like I said, kind of the last. I'm, I've got a lot of paperwork ready and getting ready to submit, you know, our third, uh, reimbursement from, for the state. And then, uh, then we'll have one final one once everything's kind of wrapped up to, to tie up any plans.
I remember my question. When you said paperwork and filing, uh, the ground source, have we gotten the paperwork for that so that?
No, I, I need to touch base with them now that they are officially.
Done, done.
With that, so.
You didn't have it, I had it. I was gonna ask that, so. Exactly.
Um. And how about it?
You did a job, you did a job.
Like seven?
Only three and a half inches of that.
It's supposed to rain today.
Did you ever make it back to? We made it up. Back up to, uh. About two weeks, yeah.
Yep, and you still were doing?
Yeah, just.
Yeah, but they're pulling water all the time out, out here.
The city?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, they?
Yeah, and that's one, that's one really hoping. Really hoping that they can get this figured out.
Wholesale, yeah.
To redo, uh, well.
Prayer.
Prayer.
Well, I saw, uh, I saw, uh, three were out there, looked like they were pulling pump out there on two fifty-four yesterday.
It was the wells.
Yeah, I'll be there, yeah, but I mean, I, they've been using that one over there on the west side.
I, the way, the way I think it states now, seems really don't tap into them damn things, so we get to a certain level of, which is unfortunate that that's the way it stays.
Well, you got one out there on the south side and you got that one that sits over there on, uh, Raymond Bell's land over there.
Well, and, and they're, and they're all on not, wholesale eighteen is, is the only one that, that actually, you know. You're talking about the city's pumps? Or are you talking about?
Rural water, rural water.
Right, 'cause we've got, you know, this obviously the city, the only wholesale eighteen that, that purchases water that, that comes out of it.
Yes.
But they also have, you know, pump, both, both entities have wells that they can pull from, but I wish they would pull sooner. Like, right now, I think, you know, we're, we're getting to the point where.
Well, I do, I wonder if they were doing maintenance on that pump, uh, you know, the ones that they were out there all day issue on that pump, so.
Yeah.
Uh, looked like they were pulling downs.
They even buy electricity from Brown Ashes and so far east of here too.
Yeah.
Probably east of you, not on your road, but, uh, just north of town, east, they're all, they're all, so.
Yep.
Um, the hope is to grudge the lake.
Really, yeah.
Yes, whichever.
I think we've got a grant for that already, didn't they?
Well, they would, they were, it's a process of trying to get it because they, they would have to enter into the watershed district. And by doing that, then he gets some, I think, kind of around some federal dollars would be, you know, sit in there, kind of like what we are up there. And, uh.
Cause like, wasn't a talk on that, I mean, then, then they have to, wanted to talk on that, doing the same thing out here that you're wanting to do to, uh, Tull River? The water dredge, have you, have you heard that?
I, I, I haven't heard anything on, on, during talks, but.
So what I understand, they can redo that too back up with, I'd find it. Uh, do a water dredge on that, which is actually going and blasting it and sucking it up and blasting it, sucking it up, so.
I've seen it out there, I've seen it, it's pretty neat process that they do and like, like one day they suck all that sand out of, you know, that comes out of the, the pond, so, I mean. It's quite the machine, it is.
Very good, good job.
Sounds good, yeah, just wanted to keep this ball rolling, so.
You wanna get, get a fin, how does?
Oh, good, good, she did it. I, I, uh, like I said, you took good, took care of my question.
Good. Who sells t-shirts on the shore house?
Water.
Why do you see it?
Why do you? Oh, that's, that's, uh, Shannon, she, 'cause she reached out and asked. We were, uh, approved that weeks ago. All times. I'm just getting on, so that, I'm hoping that, that that comes out this week and we can find, between him and I, find that I smacked it, it's a little more reasonable, but perhaps it's still. And, and the brand scheme of things I'd like to get to, if it would, and then replace the one that I'm renting every year up there in my office that we're actually using to make money with, and we can make more money, you know, with it that way, but. Say, Eric, who's in it? You're a graduate, pardon me?
I am.
Very good.
I'm a graduate from Tinsley.
Yours is from, uh, Washington? Very good.
Uh, we've got a few minutes here. I had a phone call just a little while ago from a gentleman that wanted to know about, uh, Airbnb in this basement, if there was any restrictions that the county had on that? And I know one person that used to be a city official is doing that. Outside of the kids, they're, they're.
Yeah, you just have to look through that brand new book.
Yeah.
But, Tom, Kate, I think, I think we did that, there was a gentleman who, to be, he remodeled his basement and leased it to somebody as an apartment.
Well, they, Kermit and.
Uh.
We'd have to talk.
Carolyn?
How are you?
Yeah, Carolyn.
Kermit, Carolyn, yeah, so, all, all, you might have to, well, she'll be here in a little more.
She'll be here, yeah.
Yeah, well, all that's.
How are you today?
I'm good, thank you.
Great.
Good.
Insurance?
Insurance, yes. So as you may recall, I was. Uh, we do a fees for service for the workers' home insurance with volunteer.
Thank you.
Fire.
Yeah.
So that's coming up. The agreement runs from January eighth of calendar year. So we're looking to renew that. Uh, what I just handed you is just a fine history, uh, the last four years, one on four years. Um, most, all of them are closed. I've highlighted each one. Um, there's one from twenty-three that's on the third page that they reopened in January and came back and said they needed some more medical attention, so that one was reopened.
Is that rural?
Yeah, it can be. Workers' Home can just kind of go on forever because it's unlimited medical and, and that, you know, something players up and they have that right to be called. And then the, on page four, that's where the most current policy term starts. So there's one that's still open and two are closed. So overall, I mean, they're not, they're not big planes, they're usually pretty, pretty minor, which is good. The fee that we did last year would be the same, be twelve hundred dollars for the calendar year. And I don't expect to bring in one policy change much either, cause the song is pretty static right now. It's the only thing that's completely static right now in insurance, so.
I thought all your things are last three years and no restrictions?
No, no, pretty consistent.
Is this, um, protected information that we should return to you?
I'm sorry, is it?
Is it protected information that we need to?
The name is on here.
Yes, that would be.
In my, okay.
Yeah.
So we will return this to you?
Yeah, yeah, that will be fine, just for your information and you guys to see that. So, does have any questions or?
No, so you guys? I, I can't think so.
It's consistent.
With other counties, our size, this will early in line with the routine.
You know, I don't know. I mean, we don't have any other counties that we do anything like this to do. We do some other fees for services, you know, type agreements throughout the county, but they count.
Okay. All right.
So if you guys wanna go ahead and do that, I just need to get, let's take my sure, Tommy's agreement here. I should just, if you sign both papers, I'll send them off so it's fine.
Those cities go.
Yeah.
Long, keep her busy, keep her out of trouble.
I know, I'm trying. That's what she wants, so.
And then this room says it was.
Yeah, I think you might go ahead and sign, I think, uh, where you guys have a sign copy as well. Hey, there you go.
Rusty. Rusty.
Yeah. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
See you later.
You bet.
We didn't get minutes, did we?
No, we do not have minutes.
Okay.
This is. This is a, so, I want to sort of help you with some. I want administration. Why won't the administration hours? Yeah, you're probably right. But we should be on commission. I can remember.
I'm going to throw something out to you guys, if you got money. Over the years, there are nonprofit organizations, even government is working with foundations. I wondered if we consider, just starting off our conversation, creating a foundation where we can do fundraisers, if that's up to that money, we're going to Jackson County Foundation that is overseen by the county commission. I've seen some last, within the last year, worked with a organization, many people are open to donate money for something of a prize, for example. Like the Kiwanis, participating ball fest at the county would create something to create a foundation.
They're already on here.
Well, it's not county, it's not ours. This would be ours, that we can utilize it. Well, say some organization came to us and said, hey, look, we had a disaster, can you provide us with twenty-five hundred dollars to help us? Is that what I'm saying? Like this, they're, the vans where it's, that's to raise money from interest that we use interest for scholarships. Like a disaster or something like that. It doesn't have to be a disaster, a need.
As I was saying, the money that generates is a public street fund.
Uh, no taxes. No, I mean, volunteer, I mean, I've done that for years, forty-seven years, I've been doing things like that. And, uh, we raised, uh, like across Kansas for the Kiwanis, we raised, I don't know much.
Yeah.
It's maybe a thousand dollars, five million dollars. It was split with the schoolteachers. Funds like that, you know, where we build a, a nice.
No internet secure connect, okay, so long.
Supply of money for something we have, say. I can't tell you specific, I'm just being hypothetical. Um, say the schools come to us and say, hey, uh, we had a fire, uh, equipment burnt up and stuff like that. I, I don't know that specific, but uh, the Y W C A, for example, they're doing the T-shirt itself, uh, we need something for our price, our prices there, or something along those lines. We would have fun to say where it goes, but set up games, whether it's at the Jackson County Fair, uh, and I know their businesses will donate to that for a prize. I donate, for as long as, we have a little hole in one, you know, you putt, putt into a hole in one, which you leave into a fishbowl. And, uh, you know, there's winters and kids get candy and stuff when they, they don't, but I just think about maybe a fundraiser, create a foundation, that we don't rely on taxes or anything like that. Just a thought. Yeah, I don't have, I think about that.
I know Bill, his place is different than any he seems to be involved in.
K H C has a foundation program.
Became a senior.
Yeah, but I, I wrote, I, uh, pulled up foundations at county government, the K H C has, I think, had a.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Just a thought. Whatever you have to say.
Okay.
It's a good world name.
Maybe we have a brief that can step outside and make a call.
Sure.
We, do we have anybody?
I can, I will identify what it is.
Too far.
My gas just turned off at my house. Uh, I have, I thought the plumber was going to call the gas company, but I have to, so. Foundations at county government.
Rusty, you have a problem, I think, on the individuals that come in and will probably make a, actually, uh, or change. He's got a court bill?
Ah, he must have his own, dressed up.
He's just about out. Doing, he's still, I was like.
Yeah, I don't know.
Keith, are you going to write on these, or you need to plug these through?
Yeah.
We'll take five minutes to process.
She was just here, too.
Yeah.
Was she?
Yeah. They just spoke to us.
Yeah, here a while back, what was the deal?
They were wanting to ask about a contract with the, uh, the federal. And they're closing now, so he didn't call me. I, I, I go talk to, to Jamie.
Betty Blonet Nelson.
There you go.
Betty Blonet Nelson.
Nelson, yeah, Bernie Nelson, yeah. What do you find out there?
I do, uh, Bernie Blonet Nelson.
Did the three individuals that were interviewing, are there, they're still up there? You know.
I was trying to give a cycle.
What, you have a, your grant, it's just like all.
Just down the side of the highway. On the west side.
Okay.
If, if, in other cases, if it comes into Iowa, it starts on probably sixteen seventy-five. Or maybe just go to fifth street, it's supposed to go to sixth street.
Maybe you see that for a better, maybe.
Yeah, it's intended to give access to the businesses on the west side of Highway and, um, the capital. So, they want to put six, pretty crosswalk. Yeah, and hopefully a crosswalk. We have a practice that, um, um, that they look at where everybody's coming from, places in the middle of like, across like seven eleven and, 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 and maybe we have to go on across.
Nothing old, too expensive.
Too, because it's not for you.
So, are you going to?
It's a, it's a, it's a guidance.
Okay, are you, are you, like, are you going to come up with such a part at all?
And that was, you know, it's certain stuff.
Or a, X, N U.
Ah, I.
Uh, Carol, I'm sorry. You, Carol, period. Yeah, she'll send us, get her back. Just the lady was talking. I have a question. I got a phone call a little while ago from a gentleman who was talking about renting out his basement as an Airbnb.
Oh.
What, is there rules, regulations, do you need to come see you on, or how?
That would have to be, uh, home occupation, not special use department.
Okay, because I know Nate's a guy, Corwin and Carolyn used to say they have their lease myself online. Hope you didn't know that.
Okay. While I was in the hole, I was able to do some county visits. The grant that the city of Holton is getting will be for the west side of seventy-five highway only, and they're not sure how much it's going to cost yet, but it could be down by Walmart and go up to Sixth Street. For that, it's not going to come out of the park, which they had talked about a long time ago, there, and maybe putting in a crosswalk there, which hopefully.
Well, I think you mentioned something about, uh, having Keenan do a study to see where would be best placed crosswalks throughout that area.
They, they did a study recently and they see that more people are crossing around seven eleven. Probably because of the hotels, getting over there with the kids going to school, cross at Sixth Street.
Yeah.
Instead of Fifth, once there is a crosswalk. It was. Yeah, there is.
Cross at Sixth Street.
Yes, they're crossing mostly Sixth Street, which is up by Trails.
Yeah.
And, um, hardware store. I don't, that, that to me didn't register.
But that's not, that's not in schools or anything up there, so it makes sense to me to make it a crosswalk down Fifth Street.
Exactly.
With the little flashy.
Yes, I agree.
Lights on there, it says, hey, look, I'm crossing.
Right.
Push the button, cross. Yeah.
Yeah, but it's going to be on the west, no matter how much money, what's it cost.
Still digits.
Yeah, and then they're going to go down possibly by Walmart if they can, so, but no over.
Yeah.
Anyway, I've got the.
So, should I point them in your direction to talk to you?
Yeah, I don't know, it's just a home occupation thing, or it's specially used, I guess, depends on where.
Okay.
Where it is.
Timber Ridge. Which is one of those.
Real, which rule was it, it's a rule subdivision, I don't know if there's, uh, covenants in place for those.
If they have an H O A.
Something, uh, that have restrictions and not subdivisions.
I'll point you, I'll point you in your direction.
There's no, no H O A.
To Timber Ridge.
Near around Timber Ridge, um, definitely so.
I would like to, I would, I would like to get over here.
County.
Uh, what's your office number?
Two three five eight.
All right. Boy, is that old kid around town now, so. Didn't do an Airbnb in the basement. Sector.
You realize the name is. I'll be next.
Yeah, there you go. Gee, somebody didn't know, somebody else should do that already. Want to let the cat out of the bag?
Neither one, or second one, yeah. Just the questions that we ask.
I do have one.
About, do you make notes on each form? Oh, I see what you mean, yeah, 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 yeah. I have a.
We don't have any, why?
Question that I think we need to read, so. Which is, I made a brief, conceived, ideas about, about that. Yes, okay.
Four numbers that we make that? So, they're talking about, or something, uh, I was thinking, you know, probably, but anyone, it's been. Not for me. It's me. It's me.
Bob's here. You first.
Just so you guys know, these are the ones, the microphones that I've taken and that I want back. If you guys are okay with that, this is what I'm doing.
Do you need these for dollars?
Like that what?
I don't know, if we could link into the speaker. Speaker would be another, another component sometimes. Would like to. I'd be curious of how that unit, that channel, whatever it is, mixer, whatever it is, into that speaker.
Things from the other side.
Is it ready to?
Yeah. I'm guessing that's probably.
Shouldn't it be for a microphone? For the system? That's cheap. And then the speaker?
That's the mixer component. So you change the channel on each microphone, I guess. And then the speaker would be a separate thing, so. Which the speaker is what, two E, seems like it was close to the same.
Two sixty, somewhere.
Maybe you get some that are a lot more expensive than that, but obviously.
Speaker, one, two, three, four. There's an amplifier, I bet in there. Or a microphone, 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 mixer, an amplifier, speaker of some kind, I guess, right?
That would be separate. That's just the microphone and what the mixer.
So, he could play DJ, and if someone here talking, he's supposed to go to number four.
And it, I think you can use those to carry out your mission. So you can play up your music.
Yeah. So they're not all connected at all times?
Yeah, I don't think that you probably have to turn on every mic or anything.
Yeah, so you just have to hit it in order to speak and then you let off. Those little things called audiometers.
So an H channel system, what you're looking to buy, or?
Well, we thought we did that, you have one here, and then you have one there.
Well, I mean, the H channel's fine, because how many people do you have on the plenty?
Well, seven, I mean, I got the board.
There you go, so they'd need seven over there, but because, you know, I mean, bring it back and forth wouldn't be that big a deal, because you couldn't leave it, otherwise you just have to bring the holder back and forth, so, yeah.
So it's just take it off the lines and you, I mean, it'd be pretty simple.
If we do something like this, I would also recommend purchasing a little rollaway cabinet, so that everything can go into it as far as the amp, the rack mounted amp or receiver base. It sits right in there, you just plug it in, put all your microphones in afterwards, you can roll it back and forth between the two.
Do they have cabinets like that that they've made, or do we, like?
There you go. I'm just saying it would be easier to have a little cabinet roll, you have those cabinets. Well, since he proved you wrong, you might need to sweep up.
I just wanted to say.
All right, all right. To me, that would be the most sensible thing, we're going to be carrying back and forth between the rooms.
I'm going to probably give a copy of these questions to each person, so they can follow along. I hope you need it, all of the magnets, all magnets on the computer.
Yeah, well, the original was definitely five.
Yeah, so you know, you need one of your copies. You know, I mean, I don't know, we won't kill another three, then, thank you more copies. He said, well, Bob was in there. I was working in. Why'd you want to go on in? I saw him in the.
He didn't look serious, did he?
Yeah, I don't know, I said, go back on in, there's word in, or okay, you can go back in. I don't think so. Where would he go?
I don't see him, did he go to? Do you know what he looks like, do you want to look for him?
Yeah.
So, do we want to proceed with this?
I think so, I think it'd be all right.
Do you want to? Do you want a full, the commissioner's fund to pay for this, or how do you think?
That'd be a fair.
Sorry. Hey, you're okay, Bob. You ready for tomorrow?
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
All right. Then before you start with this, I'll make a motion to.
That includes the speaker, right?
That is the.
The two and the eight is just the lights and the box, if they were.
Let's take the list just until we get down here, then we'll get the speaker involved in that too, if you're okay with that. Okay, all right, Bob, Keith Kelly, I think you're speaking. Nice to meet you, sir.
Coach Bob. Good seeing you, good time in prison? Football.
Football.
Coach, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
And now I work with him on Wednesday mornings, meeting fields.
Well, Bob, I appreciate you coming in, I appreciate you filling out an application, doing zoning and planning. We're just going to kind of, pretty informal, we're just going to go through it, ask a few questions, you know, I'll just start, we can kind of go through some of these. What's your understanding of the whole of the zoning planning book?
Well, I came one time, it's been years ago, and I guess just to make sure that if somebody has a beef or wants to make a change or something to the zoning laws in Jackson County, then they would come to that board and maybe clarify it for them and make a decision, yeah.
And you can pick, guys, you don't have to follow through one through two.
You just pick, pick the ones you want to ask, and we're just like, it's pretty informal.
Real simple experience you've had collaborating with a group.
With a group? Well, I was on the school board, so.
There you go.
That's a lot of collaboration there. Probably too much.
Yeah, you've been on there too, so, yeah.
You know, and I taught school, so, for forty-four years. So, you know, we had a lot of collaboration with other teachers and working with them, principals, superintendent.
Yeah, cool. Do you have any conflicts that may prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning planning commission agenda items?
Yeah, I'm not, I used to build houses, but I don't build them anymore, so, I haven't built them in the county for a long time.
Free for school?
Oh, I'm just looking through here. I want to kind of move off these a little bit. One of the statements in the zoning planning book that Kate just finished, and we just have in front of us, so in the back, section eight, there's a section, I thought, conflict of interest, I'll just read it. Further, no member shall appear before planning commission on behalf of any party or entity in any manner under consideration. So meaning that you're not going to come in representing somebody to that board. Does that seem reasonable? Okay, the word ex parte arrives in here. I thought I knew what it meant, but I'm going to read exactly what it means. Done with respect and respect to or in the interest of one side only, or any interested outside party. So, in our regulations, it talks about this particular thing. Individuals appearing before the planning commission are entitled to a fair and equitable hearing with decisions based on evidence presented at the hearing. Therefore, all members are discouraged from entering into ex parte contact, however, if contact is made, does there's a procedure to go through the letter of no. Meaning if there is a, if there is something before your board, you're on that board, and someone contacted you from the outside, or for or against, whatever that may be. Don't want dog candles in here. Do you have the ability, or do you feel the responsibility to let the chair know that you were contacted?
Oh, I think so.
Okay, I think that's important, because being asked to sit on a board like this, there are some things that you have to set yourself aside from. And it can be difficult, you know, walking into a meeting or walking out of a meeting, people are going to want to chew on your ear, one way or the other. I think as a reasonable board member, you have to say, talk to you about the weather, talk to you about your family, talk to you about this. And that's hard to do, it's false doubt. And so you're willing to be able to do that?
Yes, you know, you know it well, I've been on the school board, now we, we had a non-renewalable principal in this district, and that was not like.
Yeah, it was.
And didn't go over well, but, you know, it didn't move on, so.
That's all right, and if you guys have some other questions, you want to ask some of these other questions. I have something similar to what he's saying, I usually ask this all the time to everyone else. Preconceived opinions, favorable or not favorable, of zoning regulations in Jackson County. Have you experienced any of that, or you had any preconceived feelings toward that?
Not really, the only one I had was when rural water district wanted to put a building up out on two fourteen road. And I had bought two lots back in behind on Green Acres subdivision. That's the time I came in. I don't know, I wasn't real excited about it, going there since I had, you know, two building sites right behind there, so, but other than that, you know, I really didn't know, didn't have any idea what was involved with the meeting or anything else, so I just came to listen and figure out what was going on.
Okay, yeah, just one, what do you see as the role or purpose of a master planning comprehensive plan in the county?
Well, yeah, I think you have to have, you have to have a master, I mean, you have to have like a five-year plan when you're on the school board, and a ten-year, but a master plan, you need to have something, you know, writing, so that people know what's going to happen somewhere down the road, you know, it's, you know, eight, five years, we're going to do this, or two years, we're going to do this, or this is what we're going to do right now.
Do you, do you think that a comprehensive plan is an ever-evolving thing, it's not really written in stone, it's what we're looking at?
Well, I mean, I, you know, yeah, it's kind of like the, I don't know, I really haven't paid any attention to it, don't really know that much about it, but I know they wanted to put some solar panels in. Well, five years ago, who would have thought they were going to put solar panels in Jackson County, who even wanted to? So things change, you know, things are always going to change, you know, and you can't, you can't be stagnant, you gotta.
I used this example the other day, King Duke was asking me about zoning, and I said, being impartial is very hard to do. And I used the example, there was a couple things that were going to have to be rezoned here in the county. One was additional event center, and one was a little rodeo thing out here. Now, me firstly, I think we're oversaturated with event centers. I'm not sure its business model is going to be successful, I don't know, but I'm not sure that's the direction I would go, firstly. But it's not my money, everybody has a right to go broke, right? You're right, and so, the same with the little deal out here, I was like, well, doesn't seem like a good business model to me, but, like, there again, I didn't agree with it necessarily, but I'm not going to hold it up because I don't agree with it firstly. And I think that's, being impartial is very different. I don't have anything else. So I was going to ask Kate, Kate, you have a lot of. Bob, Kate and Shoe Sheet's our director of, uh, nice meeting. Razer, yeah, Ritz for me, or I mean, no.
No more hats.
But, yeah, you might just walk Bob through what one of your meetings kind of looks like a little bit, or ask what?
What one of the meetings looks like? So it would be every second Thursday of the month, if we have something on the agenda. And that's not every month, but it has been recently. The past year and a half, we've had one almost three months. Seven o'clock, it lasts about an hour. Sometimes we'll have a packed room, sometimes we won't, it just depends on the topic. I will send out a packet to you, so you are going for twenty days prior to that meeting. The month before, you're going to get what the next meeting is all about.
And we have a requirement to whatever's going to be voted on, what's the advance notice?
Forty days, published in the paper, forty days prior to the meeting.
Can you commit to more meetings in case we need to have those meetings instead of once every month?
We're working on regulations right now, and for solar, and it is going to be probably a highly contentious subject. And the reason, and I'll give a little background on this, the reason that the county commission, commission decided to take the role of writing the initial draft of the regulations, is because we're here every Monday, our county councillor is here every Monday in the morning. So, financial sense wise, it makes more sense to have him here every Monday, and us spitballing regulations back and forth until we get something hard and fast, but we're getting closer, than calling a special meeting for you guys, or not getting paid for this, you know, once a week, and then paying him extra to come and sit in on those night meetings. It just made sense for us to do it. Get a draft, and then the draft will go to you guys, and you guys will go over it, make changes, make recommendations. Tom will be there, I believe we discussed it with him, and when we give it to you, he will be there to go over, and I don't know if we're going to be there too, or not.
I don't know that we will, we haven't talked about that, but, yeah.
We haven't talked about that, but, yeah, Tom will be there at least to kind of walk you through some of the reasoning behind our putting in what we did in the regulations.
And I guess your, your board, Kate can ask him questions, and he can give you guidance and go with that.
So possibly special meetings starting today?
Correct, there could be special meetings starting today.
And that's kind of the big thing that's coming up on the planning commissions plate, is that right there?
And I'm just, you kind of alluded to, it's not going to be easy. It's going to be, well, when they're fully staffed, seven. So, it's not going to be easy, it's a tough topic, it is hard to separate wheat from chaff, and, but I think it is a very important role.
We've been working on these regulations for.
Off and on for a couple of years. I mean, yeah, contrary to what some people think, we do have more to do than just write regulations. Contrary to what some people think, we do have more to do than just write regulations. It's, I mean, there's budget, there's all kinds, I live on it, uh, there's a lot going on, so, uh, anyway, I appreciate you being...
Yeah. Well, thank you very much. Have any other questions?
For having you. Yeah, we'll...
Nice meeting.
We'll, we'll, we have two positions that we're gonna fill.
Oh, okay.
And so, we'll let you know, Bob.
That's fine.
And we'll probably have Chrissy send out a, a letter to everybody involved.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, nice meeting. See you Wednesday.
Yep. How are you? Luke, how are you?
All right.
Thank you for taking the time out of your day. I know it's busy every day.
There's always something.
There's always something.
How's Dad doing?
Uh, I guess all right, he's gonna have surgery Wednesday at four.
Got an infection in his hip again? Again?
For the third time.
Yeah.
So, he's got a few surgeries now.
Okay.
But, uh, temporary antibiotics, yep, and then in a couple of months, do it again and look for a good one back in.
Yeah, yeah.
Kinda looking good.
All right, well, totally good.
Well, I'd like to say, I appreciate you taking the time to, to fill out the, the application to be interested in being a part of this. Uh, we're just gonna ask some, it's really informative, just ask some questions, kinda give an idea of where, where you are and, and kind of what the responsibility of a zoning planning commission is. Um, and so, I'll just ask you, uh, right out of the gate, what do you, what do you see the, the responsibility of zoning planning, that commission being?
I mean, I really don't know a lot about it.
Yeah.
Just from what I've seen, I guess, that they rule on, um...
You get one of these.
Permits, okay. Um, yeah, just raised the, having a, a, uh, say in how things go, um, zoning-wise, change, you know, changes. Like I said, I really don't know a lot of upfront, I guess.
But you've served on, um, you've served on several boards, um, fair board, still on it?
Currently, lifetime commitment.
Lifetime commitment. Okay. Liam?
Yeah, what kind of experiences have you had collaborating with the groups we've been on? You just explain one of them right there, so.
That's been the, the most difficult one, I've been with fifteen people and trying to get things published. I've been on backboard since the inception, I mean, since, not the inception. Since the first one, I think. When I came on with my first meeting, they said, well, we sold the fairgrounds in town to pieces, so we're moving. That was my first meeting, so I've been a part of all of those transactions, charing board, so.
And you guys did a great job.
Personally, yes.
Uh, do you have any conflicts that, that might prevent you from making an unbiased decision concerning planning commission agendas?
I don't believe that I do.
Um, one of the things that, in this book, and this talks about the role of the commission member, um, and I'm just gonna read these to you. It's, uh, talks about conflict of interest. Uh, no member shall appear before the planning commission on behalf of an impartial entity, uh, or any matter under consideration. If you have a problem with that, I mean, then you would not be representing them. And then ex parte, yep, it means that you won't, um, done with respect to or any interest of one side only or an interested outside party. Meaning you won't have information, you won't talk to people, if there's a matter before you, you won't be outside the meeting having those conversations with those parties for or against. That's a tough, that's a tough one. And, and I just, you know, this, this states pretty clear, um, you know, that individuals appearing before the planning commission are entitled to a fair and equitable hearing with a discussion based on a decision, excuse me, based on the evidence presented at the hearing. Therefore, all members are discouraged from entering into ex parte contact. However, if you are, if somebody comes up to you, are you willing to let the chair know that I've been approached by this or that and, and let them know? Do you have the ability to do that, I guess?
Right, yes.
Okay. I, I thought so, but, um, these are, and I'm gonna tell you, uh, being on this commission at this point in time is not gonna be easy. It, it's tough. And when you get up and leave a meeting or when you come in and if you're approached by people, you have to have the ability to go, I'll talk to you about the weather or your family, and I can talk to you about this. And that's, that's the hard part. Now, I'm not gonna make a free pitch, it's gonna, it's gonna be tough being on this board, especially over the next couple of years.
Well, I might go along the same lines with that, just maybe state it a little differently. Any preconceived opinions favorable or unfavorable about zoning regulations? You know, we may be interested in the county going forward, but...
I mean, I don't know that I have, I mean, I have personal values, I guess, that I would adhere to as within, as anybody would. I don't have any...
You don't have an agenda, basically?
No.
Okay, good.
Okay. Uh, I'll, I'll ask you, I was gonna ask Bob, we have a comprehensive plan in this county. And a comprehensive plan kinda lays out a roadmap of, you know, where we think we might be, x amount here, down the road. Uh, do you see that as being set in stone or do you see that as an ever-fluid, ever-moving target to try to, uh, try to gain, try to...
Well, I see it, I mean, as something that, that was written by this current commission or...
Or previous. What year, Kate, if you had guessed?
Two thousand two...
Two thousand three, I think it was, yeah, yeah.
I guess one of the things, and I don't know whether it's right or wrong, but the commission changes often. And being bound by something that was written twenty years ago could be difficult for the future.
Correct.
And so, like, I don't see that as, as only true forever.
So, it is kind of a fluid document?
It would, it would have to be based on current conditions.
Okay.
Yeah, the way, the way I read that document is, it's, it's a recommendation, but it's not mine to throw.
Yeah. And I'll, I'll throw this into, uh, the... If you sit on this current, if you sit on this current board, like you select the son's current board, one of the challenges that you will be faced with is zoning regulations. Uh, the three of us have been working on zoning regulations for almost two years, okay? Uh, we're not rushing into it as some think because it's been almost two years and we've got our second draft that we're working on. And the reason that the three of us are working on that is a, from a logistic standpoint, a fiscal standpoint for the county. Uh, we're here every Monday, our county counselor's here every Monday morning. So, it makes sense for the three of us and him to write regulations to give to you guys, the planning commission, rather than once a month, you guys meet with him and you have to pay money for him to come up, you know, on these certain nights. Uh, and then, you know, once a month's not, we're gonna get you anywhere down the road real fast, even though, you know, a few years into the process.
Yeah, I'm gonna add just a small piece of what, what Mark said. We've been accused of circumventing zoning planning, and that's, that's not the case. We're adding another level into that, like having a document, a draft, which is prepared, so now you can look at it. You can change anything, that, that board can change anything and everything within, uh, and send it back to us and we can change stuff that goes back to you. But being able to have, or like Mark said, our attorney here, the number of meetings that it would've taken you guys to put together for the board to put together a draft document would've been a nightmare. And if that board doesn't get paid to be there and, um, so, I just want everybody to understand that, that that's the reason that we did it. Create a draft so we have a zoning plan.
Just as another level of press terms to people.
And so, would you be available for additional meetings if needed?
Yeah.
We're, we all have the same set of questions we wanna ask each...
Yeah. Yeah, when we were doing the fair board, when we first moved, we had, we had two meetings to back it up.
It's gonna be real similar to that with this, and, and it, it's not gonna be easy, it'll be contentious, it'll be, you know, there'll be, uh, but I think, you know, being able to be calm and, and listen, and, and be professional, so, you know, Kate? Yeah. Kate, anything you wanna add?
Well, I'll just add, uh, we, we would meet every second Thursday of the month at seven o'clock, it's to the way the planning commission, uh, meets. Uh, and we could possibly be doing it more often. Um, second Thursday of the month is, uh, a good time for...
Yeah, the third Thursday's fair board, so second worst.
Uh, and then during the day sometimes, would that be not too late?
Self-employed, so.
And, um, I would be sending out your packet twenty days prior, so we have to publish everything in the paper twenty days prior to the meeting, um, to let the surrounding neighbors know and the public know. Um, so I would be sending out a packet with what's on the agenda, um, twenty days prior, so.
Do you have any questions for us?
Yeah.
Well, I was kinda, I mean, thinking of what you were saying of, of how you only make a decision based on what happens at that meeting. How do you formulate an opinion? I mean, are you able to research?
Absolutely.
That's a great question.
Yeah.
I mean, I get what you're saying is not to converse with the either party on either side of things, but you still have to.
Absolutely.
Well, and I think what, I think what Keith, and I'm not trying to work through...
No.
I think what Keith was trying to say is, a lot of times after these meetings, you'll see little conclaves of people standing outside, pro-con, you know, neutral, whatever.
Yeah, I call them...
Trying to get your tail over and, you know, and, uh, those are the things that you kinda need to just walk away from.
Right.
And do the research on your own, I mean, yeah, you know.
And that's what I, I understood it, I was just meaning if you, if you could only make a decision based on what you hear in the meeting, then that would be very difficult.
No, that, that's not, that's not the way I did it, no.
No, that, and that's not the way. You are encouraged to be fully informed when you come into that meeting, uh, to do the research on your own, uh, to reach out to Kate. If she has any information or what places you could find information, um, yeah, we encourage that, you know, that's, that's very important.
And that's kinda why I try and send the packet, packet out so early, um, about the same time as publishing the paper. So, you've got some time to think about questions, and it was all derived by...
And I guess for me personally, I, I've thought about this commission in the past and it just never worked out. I know, and, and as you're saying, it's gonna be contentious, I don't have to have that, I don't need it. Um, my thing is, this was, you know, the, the opening happened at the time when I thought, oh, okay, you know, when it worked out for me.
Yeah.
Asking for representation from the western side of the county.
You live, just for the record, you live off K...
Off of K Road.
Yeah.
Right south of the Hill Rock Corner.
Yep.
So, I, I mean, I guess I don't have any, I don't know, I, I mean, specifically an agenda. But I do have, the reasons I would want to do this is I do have beliefs or whatever that I would...
Sure.
I wanna see protected in the county.
Mm-hmm, I, I appreciate that.
And I, and I may have some of those that are able to be changed based on current knowledge, which is something I don't have a, you know, other than what you see in the paper is what we know about, I mean, the hot button topic is the elephant in the ring.
Right.
Sure.
I don't necessarily need to be a part of those decisions, but I would like to be. I mean, it's not something that I wanna get in there and say, you know, I don't wanna have a say in this. I do wanna have a say in what happens in the future in Jackson County, and that's the reason why I'm doing this.
Well, there's been a lot of disinformation, misinformation spread around, uh, whether it's on Facebook or, uh, letters to the editor or whatever. Uh, and I keep saying, you know, give us a chance, let us get the regulations out there. And I think that you'll see that the three of us are, are not the enemy. We are trying to put our heads together, take our time, and do the right thing for the county, for the citizens of Jackson County. We're not, we're not out, let's put it this way, I've, I've been accused of getting a million dollars. I got a million dollars, sure as hell aware it is, you know.
I, yeah, and...
It just, it just, that, that's, the misinformation, disinformation is running rampant, so...
At, at the end of the day, our responsibility, and if you were on the zoning plan, your responsibility would be to, uh, protect the county on any issue that comes before. It's protect the county, the people who live around it, whatever that may be. I don't care if it's a dog food plant, an event center, anything that, that would require special use or zoning changes. It's our responsibility to not go, boy, I don't like that or just like that. But how does it affect the county, the people who live around it? And that, that at the end of the day is our responsibility, um, you know, it is, it just is. Anyway.
I'm good.
Any other questions, Luke?
I, I, is it a term, there's a term or...
Two, every...
Three weeks.
Three, three years. Then you're up for not election, but just re, reelect.
Now, is there one term that is, will be a shorter term?
Yeah.
Or two terms will be shorter?
Well, it's if you're replacing a member, you would finish out that term and then you'd be up again for another, any weird term.
And since there's two, since there are two members that will fill it?
So, the one I think was at the end of this year, so if we...
One is at, at the end of the, this twenty-four?
Yes. Um, I'm not sure about the other one, if it's...
If it's been taken for...
It's twenty-five, I believe.
Okay. So, it would be until, uh, some of the, pretty five, and then it would be moving on, so pretty long, the three years.
Whoever we, the two, two people that we choose, uh, probably the easiest thing would be to put an ease and a half to draw them out for the first term and then give them to be filling for the second term. Is that, I mean, that sounds logical to me.
So, anyway, that's kinda it, that shell, uh, any other questions, Luke?
I don't think so. I'm just, you'll be, be willing to serve, I guess.
I appreciate that. I, I do appreciate that.
Thanks for taking the time out to do this.
All right. All right, thank you.
See you.
I'd say tell you, Dad, do well.
All right, thank you.
All right, we'll see you later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So. Either way, auxiliary cable or. I'm assuming you have.
Oh, I suppose.
Microphone.
Yeah.
The what?
Speaker.
What speaker?
Speaker, I wonder?
Oh.
What are we going on? There's supposed to have output with it, because it says the, uh. Uh, let's see. In here, inputting microphone control, mix, cornerage output, cornerage output, it'll have a microphone to, uh, your input on your mixer, speaker stereo.
You guys are really busy, aren't you?
Hey buddy, what's going on?
I'm just trying to give you some more money.
All right, we'll take it.
See, see if you can ask for more, Rudy.
We'll take it.
What, what truck? You guys doing okay?
Doing all right.
Doing well.
Okay, well, look like you all still want peace.
It's early.
What?
It's early.
It's early?
Yeah. We're good, how, how long has your road up there? Yeah, yeah.
Well, we moved up Rock Valley and.
Yeah. Maybe it'll rain tonight. Don't think so?
He said, maybe twenty-five hundred.
Oh, that's all right. Oh, so it does, so glad it's out there.
Good luck with your tissues.
Yeah. Uh, slight chance.
So say, I rode my bike in, so I'm riding my bike up to the football game soon as this is over, and so I won't be home till six thirty-seven, so, yeah, let it rain, take a ride and rain out here. Maybe it'll rain, rain.
Um, I don't think so.
I'm going volleyball.
Have your day.
So, good seeing you. So you got candles and everything with it?
But if we needed to get an auxiliary cable for.
Well, there, there's an auxiliary cable here, I was looking it up, and it says recommended for this, so I saw it, so I must have mom have it.
How much is that, an auxiliary cable?
Uh, a dollar and eleven cents.
I mean ideally, it would be nice if the Bluetooth.
Also, I was wondering.
Microphone, mixer, would be next. Bluetooth to the speakers, if there was no cable at all.
Yeah.
The, the.
You're not included in that, though?
No. But it wouldn't be, it would be okay, but what, because you can set the speaker right here by the table.
Now, this is not saying that this unit is Bluetooth, there's microphones that I can see on here.
The, there was one that had a component, and then Bluetooth speaker, so, darkness. A little resnack.
Uh, the three hundred and ten dollar, the different one. Some big channel desktop, use snap. Excellent work, okay, so this would be large, this would be large. The little. Okay, so that one's larger, it's not a different microphone speed and. I'm sure it's key, because this is. Is that annoying or whatever?
Okay.
You say that you want to have nine?
Yeah, yeah.
You had, you had little, little, little.
Right.
Oh, Vicki Gillen.
Yeah.
So she's, so she was six. With the member presidents last meeting were Steve, Delbert, Jonathan, Ben and Chris.
Yeah, we have five.
Yeah, that was five.
Five members.
Vicki was absent. Okay?
Six.
That's six. So with, with Steve gone and one other member gone, that leaves two, so we'd have one, two, three, four, five. Again, still five total. So.
The three is that's eight, so we would need one more.
Yeah, I like that idea, add those three and then advertise for one more.
How many goes in that? What did you read it as? That my statute was supposed to have nine?
Yeah.
So was there another applicant?
There was, but he backed out.
He don't, uh, have any attorney.
Wasn't there, um, Anderson? Was there another one there?
He was on the very.
Oh, there was.
That's right. From out the western part of the county.
He was around.
Yeah, he was.
Shawn Henderson.
Yeah. He's a, he's the, oh, he's the guy, soldier. Military.
Yeah.
Shawn Henderson, yeah.
Like I said, that's the way that I read it. Supposedly not, so whether they change that somewhere along the line. We've had seven from the implementation of the planing zoning.
Guy that was talking about it, and he not, sorry to interrupt, but now he's, he's interested.
There was another guy.
That was talking about putting in their application.
That you talked to? Mike?
Oh, yeah, Indiana, like, he.
He is.
He.
Society.
Yeah, he did, he declined. Indiana, right, you're talking, yeah, Mike. Or his, Bron, Bron, Bronson. He declined. I was surprised because I thought you were, but he said he didn't, he didn't have that kind of dedication to it.
Yeah, see, can't, two thousand six Kansas Code nineteen twenty-nine thirty and it says there's a new revision of the Kansas statute, twenty twenty-three. So I don't know if that's, maybe we're just gonna ask.
And adding the new that goes on, who would have to establish their term.
Yes, and I think with that thing, we'd have to go with the one, two, three that recommends here.
Which is kind of, which is how it is now, I mean, every year there are one or two that.
But they're, okay, so if they're, if you want to establish them as the one, two or three, then I'd say we just draw their name out of the hat so that. I think that'd be the first way to do it.
Sure.
I got half.
Now, say again?
To establish which term they're going to be into, the fairest way to do it would be either do that, draw a card, whatever you want to do on. I think just, you know, throw their names in the hat. For the one-year term is so-and-so, for the two-year term is so-and-so, for your term is so-and-so. Sound fair?
It's just a formality though, as far as after one year you decide up.
Correct.
Yeah, they'll put in their application again when their term is up. So you. Putting that in paper again for a couple of weeks or take it until the end of.
I'm, I'm just looking through the applicants that we currently have.
Some of that is a process.
Yes.
I'm just curious if they changed that.
Mark Riddle?
Who?
Mark from.
Riddle?
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 Mark from.
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 Riddle?
I like that idea, add those three and then advertise for one more.
How many goes in that? What did you read it as? That my statute was supposed to have nine?
Yeah.
So was there another applicant?
There was, but he backed out.
He don't, uh, have any attorney. Oh, he didn't.
Wasn't there, um, Anderson? Was there another one there?
He was on the very.
Oh, there was.
That's right. From out the western part of the county.
There you go. Shawn Henderson.
Yeah. He's, uh, he's the, oh, he's the guy, soldier. Military.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Shawn Henderson, yeah.
Like I said, that's the way that I read it. Supposedly not, so whether they change that somewhere along the line. We've had seven from the implementation of the planning zoning.
Guy that was talking about it, and he not, sorry to interrupt, but now he's, he's interested.
There was another guy.
That was talking about putting in their application.
That you talked to? Mike?
Oh, yeah, Indiana, like, he.
He is.
He. Yeah, he did, he declined.
Indiana, right, you're talking.
Yeah, Mike. Bron, Bron, Bronson. He declined. I was surprised because I thought you were, but he said he didn't, he didn't have that kind of dedication to it.
Yeah, see, can't, two thousand six Kansas Code nineteen twenty-nine thirty and it says there's a new revision of the Kansas statute, twenty twenty-three. So I don't know if that's, maybe we're just gonna ask.
There's another one.
And adding the new that goes on, who would have to establish their term.
Yes, and I think with that thing, we'd have to go with the one, two, three that recommends here.
Which is kind of, which is how it is now, I mean, every year there are one or two that.
But they're, okay, so if they're, if you want to establish them as the one, two or three, then I'd say we just draw their name out of the hat so that. I think that'd be the first way to do it.
Sure.
I got half.
Now, say again?
To establish which term they're going to be into, the fairest way to do it would be either do that, draw a card, whatever you want to do on. I think just, you know, throw their names in the hat. For the one-year term is so-and-so, for the two-year term is so-and-so, for your term is so-and-so. Sound fair?
It's just a formality though, as far as after one year you decide up.
Correct.
Yeah, they'll put in their application again when their term is up. So you. Putting that in paper again for a couple of weeks or take it until the end of.
I'm, I'm just looking through the applicants that we currently have.
Some of that is a process.
Yes.
So. I'm just curious if they change that.
Mark from.
Riddle?
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 Mark from. It's just a formality though, as far as after one year you decide up.
Yeah, they'll put in their application again when their term is up. So you. Putting that in paper again for a couple of weeks or take it until the end of.
I'm, I'm just looking through the applicants that we currently have.
Some of that is a process.
Yes.
So. I'm just curious if they change that.
Mark from.
Who?
Mark from.
Riddle?
Riddle?
I'm just curious if they change that. Who?
Mark from.
Riddle?
Riddle? I don't know what's. Let's see, uh.
Sardo?
Yeah.
Sardo?
Uh? Doesn't look like a D.
It's a R T O.
Sardo, that one's it? I want you to, you want that as?
I think it's a countertop. Company, is that right?
Correct, where's it located? Uh, here is Atlanta, that would be representation from that area. What'd you say it was? Vice President.
Sardo?
This is.
It's a, let's say R T O.
DM?
T.
DM.
It's a top, Sardo? Just saying. Top, some of those.
St. Mary's?
He's got a top. So has he served on the St. Mary's Plating, uh, Commission in the past? Was moved into the other area. You want to bring those back to him before an interview as well as the other one, the Mr. Henderson applicant? If I'm done, can I do that? Let's do that. We already got some applicants. Let's get that over.
I don't know that Mr. Riddle reapplied.
Um. You know, the, uh.
That was the time before. I don't know that he reapplied, but we got a job to set up time. I don't know that he reapplied, but we gotta reach out and set up time for interview.
Vicki Gilland?
Henderson?
Yeah, you got it. We ended up doing that, yeah. When you.
Two thousand, I'm just about to look at two thousand and six statute for nineteen, and it says, it says nine of the number twelve counties. So somebody, or another, and that's, that's the farthest back that I can look at.
I think that would give us additional representation to the faculty committee. Um. But I'd like to interview both of them. You guys.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is this the planning?
Planning, yeah. And then you, Vicki Gilland, she is up twelve twenty-four, so address this at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
You'll bring, you'll remember to bring that back.
It says she will, that she's willing to serve.
Yes.
How'd she sound? She's a good guy. Thirty-seven years as a nurse.
You wanna be sent somewhere?
Yes, I do.
You're having meetings, right?
I won't.
I think you do, they, didn't say you have some plans for that day?
Uh, I won't be, but, um. I think you guys can like, do good, uh, um. I, I think, I. Do it for that, that way we can get a full board.
All right. But yeah, like I said, I went back to two thousand and six, and it says nine of the number twelve there, so.
Okay.
Who knows?
That would be good presentation.
Yeah. That is a good catch.
Uh, yeah, I think, I think we need, let's go ahead and interview, but I think I'd like to have Todd clarify that, if he could.
I send him a text, so he can, he can clarify, you guys.
Okay.
Just, you know, some of the statute to look at? The statute number?
No, I should call him. Guy.
What is it?
Kinda weird.
Nineteen twenty-nine fifty-seven?
Yes.
Can I have a devil's name when you leave? Thank you. Good morning.
Uh. So we're gonna sign those three, get them out.
Say that one more time, nineteen dash.
Twenty-nine fifty-seven?
Twenty-nine fifty-seven.
Okay. So, I will entertain motion to approve, uh, to appoint, um. Together, J. Richard Black, Robert Phillips, and Luke Kennedy to fill the planning board addition group, Kennedy will be on the board view, so.
Second.
The vote second, all, any further discussion, all payers say aye.
Aye.
All pros and cons. Thank you, gentlemen.
You guys can decide the terms on those three.
Uh. Anyway, I'm gonna change your beat, Chris.
No, I don't disagree, I don't disagree.
Are you gonna do some anymore?
Oh, I'm gonna.
Yeah, we're first issue. What did you move?
First, uh. I didn't move. Todd, are you today, I'm your speaker. Yep, so statute nineteen twenty-seven fifty-seven.
Twenty-nine fifty-seven.
Twenty-seven fifty-seven deals with number of applicants on zoning board, and the way we read that is that it needs to be not, not less than.
Not less than nine, not more than twelve.
And, and it looks like it was changed, and it has not been updated, and we, if that's your interpretation, we have appointed three members, and we will report, uh, maybe a couple other guys next week, and we will make a decision to add one more, if that's your interpretation. Dash twenty-nine fifty-seven. Sorry. Second par, yeah, second paragraph, sorry to put you on the spot. Yeah, second paragraph, planning of zoning, um, it says board of county commission, I really. We, we, we said this, we were told we had seven. Well, I'm, I'm looking at another state website, and it says zoning and planning boards of townships and counties, planning commission, consolidated zoning boards, established members, yeah, meeting power. And, um. Yeah, this is nineteen dash twenty-nine fifty-seven. Oh, really?
Does it say large?
Okay.
But it says, uh, you have best.
It's seven. Okay.
So I, I'm looking at that.
Well, I, I tell you what, research it, and spring that information on Monday, and, uh, and we'll, we'll have, we'll make a decision, I guess, but. I mean, unless you got a few minutes to look at it, if it's only seven, then you can keep going directly ahead. Okay. All right. That'd be great. Okay, that's good, Todd, thanks.
Sure.
Okay. We have attorney for these states' statues. Which is crazy.
Did you mention something about twelve, like chapter twelve?
Also, yeah, did you say something about chapter twelve?
Yeah, subsection B, and then you gotta go back to something else, and, yeah.
I know the word.
Cause there were two chapters about deal with the zoning.
Yeah. But I didn't see in that, uh.
What he's saying is, have nine, only deals with two counties, because of the size of it.
That's what I was wanting to, when you said that, since we're a hundred percent population, we don't have to.
I thought that was dealt with in counties of population between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand.
Bill.
I saw that.
You'll get, uh, get back to it later, too. So.
Try you?
Try you.
All right.
Let's not sign those until we know what's, what's going on, I guess, and if it's back to seven. We'll, we'll, I'm still, if they were losing it, if it's nine, then we'll proceed, and then we'll, and that's another one. Yeah.
Maybe you say consolidated.
Okay.
On that. Nineteen twenty-nine fifty-seven.
Who did, what'd you say, what number?
I mean, whenever you say consolidated.
Definitely sense.
Like, it was like wind up.
Wind up Johnson. Said you would, said you probably wind up at Johnson, yeah, it was case law.
Well, Shawnee County has a hundred and seventy-five thousand people.
Okay, here we go. Ready, Mark?
Yep.
All right. It's twelve dash seven four four.
Eight.
Not less than.
Five. Eight.
So, and not more than.
I put four, not more than, question mark? Not less than five. And this is not less than five?
Does the same, so it could be this.
The number of members of the planning commission may be adhered by orders of resolution.
Orderly.
And when it was two, okay, so maybe this is where we're at, and it's two members of such a commission shall reside outside or within three miles of the corporate city limits. But that's, that's for city. Or county planning commission, okay, a majority of the members of the county planning commission shall reside outside the corporate limits of any incorporated city in the county. A county metropolitan or regional planning commission may serve as a planning commission for a city that is not for this. So, a majority of the members must reside outside of the corporate limits of any incorporated cities in the county.
And that would be true in this case. You have that for.
Where's Victoria, or, uh?
She's outside.
She's outside.
Delbert's too.
Delbert's outside.
Are we sure?
Yeah, cause city limits start just south of his house. He resides out in county.
Okay.
It's, city limits avoid her, right there at the edge.
So then we're good. Correct?
Yeah, we form green.
Yeah.
I asked him if it, if, if there were an actual value.
Yeah.
If it was have nine, could you have nine?
I'd say I didn't need to throw up.
No.
There are multiple regions of works, but our, you know, we wanted to make sure that we were doing it right.
And that was twelve seven forty-four?
That was twelve seven forty-four. And we can edit that for next time it comes up, right?
Well, I have it upstairs, and I have someone.
No, I would say any of these would have a, we'll keep that.
On the microphone is output?
Output, okay.
So, that, that's an interesting, be this second tax fact, no mind, we still do nine, I think. We wanna do nine? Do nine.
What do you think?
And here's the reason I say that, I, I'm, I'm gonna. My reason for saying I think nine is better is because you're not always gonna have a full board, people are gonna be sick, you have people who have ailments, and I think the more years you have present, the better off you are. That's my personal opinion.
That's a path, uh, nine, read what we have now, and get one more.
That would be great, I, I mean, I don't see how, what, what drawbacks do you see, other than trying to hurt nine cats instead of seven? I mean, essentially, I'm being funny, but I mean, you know.
You're reading facetious.
Yeah, a little. I'd like to do.
I mean, that would be good, that's, that's it.
I mean, you're adding two more emails, you send a group email.
It's the packets, I don't send emails unless I'm just.
You mail.
I, I, I wanna actually talk to them, and see that they're gonna be there, um.
Here, here's why I like it, too, if, if we can get one more person, west of Jackson County, I think that's a good thing. Yeah, they cover a lot, plus you got variety of people, you know, they're all thinking what they want, maybe not all the same cat, I think that's good, that's a pretty.
Do they do conversation?
They don't agree on everything?
Mark?
Hesitation?
No. No.
Yeah, looks like we got plenty.
I think let's get one more, we're good.
Okay, we're signing away.
Okay, so we're gonna have a board that consists of nine members, so.
That'd be correct. What was the other guy's name?
So the statute said by resolution.
And. So we would.
Do you guys need to do a resolution for?
Nine members, or maybe?
I don't know.
Yeah.
And, the majority would still need to be, I mean, unincorporated, and so how does that, does that still work with?
That should still work.
The other ones?
I mean.
Uh, where, uh, well, he was in Emmett, right, or his mailing address is Emmett.
Uh-huh.
So we'd have to find out if he is in county or not. To Sardo?
Yeah. But she wouldn't be in the city limits then, if it's in the San Antonio.
Right, that's, that's a great point, no, it's not, yeah.
Yep. True.
Ah, good catch.
So like there, it's, it's not.
Jackson County.
But still has open. Okay, I'm not in the right district, you know, so I'll do it later.
I just wanna make sure, um.
I'm just getting those work track, what do you?
Well, when we go up and vote for myself. I only need one.
So four of them will still be, will be by.
Correct.
So you want a resolution?
So if you create a resolution, so have, uh.
Not that I have one, or, why should I see, I put it in the minutes that Todd will draft a resolution, and this is what he's at, and I like it.
Listen, you're in the last round, but I'm sure you're.
Microphone, speaker.
I have someone right now.
Okay.
I don't see anything with wireless.
Well, I figured they would do an act.
Bluetooth. Apple for speakers, so it's not just wired, we can, I, I agree, less, less complications, wired up.
Plug in the other, you know.
And I'm pretty sure that this is... This is plug and play except for microphones, microphones are wireless, but yes, I mean... But the mixer is plugged in and not wireless, but sure, I couldn't say if...
Pull out a resolution for, for our meeting that's needed.
We'll find out there on Wednesday. If all goes well, I'm taking it off, because I'm very good at it.
Congratulations. Okay.
We'll see how it goes on the screen.
Thirty-two?
I'll go down. Fifty-six? Yep. Fifty-six, I never forget that.
Do you have a recommendation on system?
Well, I think we could try this one here, and we don't like to look at it in the same fact, uh, it looks like, I just can't see where it says that the, that the M plugs in, it all fits out of the power like that.
The, the microphones are wireless to the mixer.
To the mixer.
And then the mixer is going to plug into the speaker.
The speaker.
The speaker is a multitude for the extra microphone.
Yep, so if you want to run it, Dan?
Court side, I can do it.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we purchase a pile eight-channel wireless microphone system for the commission room and the memorial hall to be used by the commissioners and the planning zoning board. So we might have, so we might have four tonight. So we got nine?
We got the price down, probably.
Yeah, price of two hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents through Amazon, and also a B-free sound Bluetooth portable speaker, uh, for a price of a hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents. Also with that, Amazon basic XLR microphone cable to the speaker PA system, nine dollars and eleven cents. Seven, you want to look it up?
Yeah, I saw it. Do it in seconds.
All right, there's that. Aye. Take them out of the commissioners. I'll look at your hands.
Anything else, Jim?
No.
Okay, table two.
Second.
Section two, please.
Aye. Do you have any more? All right.
See you next week.
Okay.
See you later.
I got to come on.
See Jamie.
Oh, I got to run.
That's with Jamie.
See you all later. See you, buddy, be careful.
Good. Ladies, have a good evening.
Yeah, you too, thank you.
Did the judge come down and entertain you?
He's just a nice fellow.
He is.
He's just a nice guy. He is, I like him. Oh, did I finish that to this thing?